All right. Hi, everybody. It is 6:30 on Wednesday, June 14th. This is the regular City Council meeting in Wood Creek, Texas. And I am calling the meeting to order, and I just want to say it is fantastic to see city government at work. Thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts. I'm asking everybody to rise for a moment of silence and then please stay standing. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, which stands under our top, indivisible, and never seen or forgotten. In honor of the Statue of Liberty, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, one area, one individual. Thank you, National Secretary of Federal Roll.
Sir, Mayor Jeff Frasco.
Here.
Mayor Prettenbrandt Cooley.
Here.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Drummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Deborah Heim.
Here.
We have a forum.
We have a forum. All right, we'll proceed. There's a little bit of a change with public comments. Item number seven, which is on the agenda as a public hearing to consider the above-ground pool ordinance because of a scheduling mix-up, you know, it went and got posted as a public hearing, but because planning and zoning decided not to report out on their findings at their meeting, we can't legally have a public hearing per se. So you're welcome to do public comments. Yeah, so we'll be doing public comments instead. They'll all be on the record. I have all the, all the things that people had sent out that couldn't be here. But it is, there will be an official public hearing. It'll be announced, and we'll, we'll get that out pretty soon. So, so we're gonna go through public comments, and, and so if you have public comments on the above-ground pools or whatever, if you were here to speak to the public hearing, this is your chance. So, we have the... I'm gonna start with, I have, I have like eighteen...
Down seventeen.
Down seventeen. We have, we have quite a few, quite a few people who wanted to speak that couldn't be here, so they sent in written comments. And so I will read those after the people have a chance to speak that are here to speak in public. So, and considering everything, I mean, if you want to stay for the entire four or five hours of City Council that we're gonna probably have tonight, you're welcome to stay. But considering the crowd and that we're past the year above, consider discretion. So the first on the, on the public comment list is Judy Brithenby.
I think you'll have three minutes to Aurora LeBron.
All right, and Glory Whitehead?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm glad to be here and counsel mayor. Since it is not a public hearing, I did file a letter with the city that would be read into the record and also would be made a part of the record for this meeting. But in the interest of the time and to move forward, I just wanted to say that my main concern, I certainly sympathize greatly with the families who would love to have a pool, the above-ground pool. And I'm for totally the idea of having basically a moratorium on all pools until we get through our drought issues in the, in the county, especially in the city. So I'm not opposing the above-ground pools. What I'm having a problem with is the process of how the city and how the public actually has the input to the issue and how the agenda item appeared to be rather rushed through to a process, and that's what I'm concerned about. So if we can kind of address as a community the issue of how we can, how, when, and where, and the council considers the agenda coming to not only council, the agenda for the community, that there be more time given and more thought to that input from the community. So I, I'm gonna make this short because I know there are a lot of people who would like to talk. So again, my written comments are on the record, and they will be available for anyone who wants to see them, and they'll be part of a public hearing when we have a public hearing. But thank you all.
Thank you. Mayor Disland, Mayor Disland.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I yield my three minutes to Aurora LeBron.
All right, Aurora LeBron.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Aurora LeBron. I live in Wilson Circle. I have been at that house for thirty-eight years. And I raise my daughter, my youngest daughter, in the city. She will be forty next week. She was two years old when we moved here. So I know the challenges that, even more challenges than to have with your child in the summer for things to do. And I can, I sympathize with people who are raising their children. My next door neighbors, I'm privileged to have a lovely couple with two beautiful children who quickly invited me as I was getting in my car to join them in their kiddie pool today. I told them, not today, I'm busy, but tomorrow for sure. So that's what I have to say today is, first of all, you know, I have been in city government. I have been in the school board, and I had the pleasure to serve the state of Texas in an executive position and be challenged for the things that I did or did not do that did not please some of my constituents and some of the legislators. So I understand. I do, when I come and form something out, it's not in the effort to criticize, it's in my desire to speak. And very clearly, one of the things that I am very passionate about is the issue of freedom of speech, of speech and freedom. I know some of you know me, but just a little bit of history. I'm from Cuba. I lost everything within my family when I was seventeen years old. I was had to leave it because my parents would not want me to be subjected to a dictatorial government. I have fought for freedom, and I will continue to fight for freedom of expression. And if that is criticism, that's part of being a public servant. You're gonna be criticized, accepted. I sympathize. I, one of the things I'll say is timing is everything in comedy and also in government. And to have food now, whether above or in ground, is not, this is not the time when most of Texas and the hill country are suffering from a pervasive drought. I know you have the privilege of having David Baker here at the meeting on the seventh. And I was unable to be here, but I know what he said, and he expressed his concerns. And also he gave a measure of what it would take for the rest of the city to do conservation measures to accommodate additional water use. So this is what I tell you. If you don't want to listen to me, please listen to David. The other thing I think here is, there seems to be a feeling of, well, it's okay because we're gonna truck the water. Well, that's a very selfish approach, just on little figures. I like figures. Twenty twenty-two was the eleventh blight year in the past one hundred and twenty-eight years. And is the, so is the worst drought since two thousand and eleven. Last summer, sixty-eight percent of Texas was in extreme drought conditions, and thirty percent was in exceptional drought conditions, according to the U.S. drought monitor. Is there, don't we owe a responsibility beyond the Wimberly Valley to protect the resources of the state and our water? I think we do. We just pledge allegiance to Texas. So I think we do. Drought conditions are forecasted to persist throughout the early summer with some improvement across the central parts of Texas. Is it enough? No. Rather than allow additional pools to be constructed, I would like to suggest to this council that we halt approval of all swimming pools in our city as long as drought conditions persist. Cost of the territory for additional pools with only in-ground pools allowed is so expensive, few people can afford them. I know I can't, not that I would have one. Above-ground pools can be purchased, installed, and maintained for less than half the cost of an in-ground pool, which may encourage additional applications. For several years, we have encouraged our residents to reduce water consumption. We have seen an increase in groundwater collection, water-wise landscaping, along with other water conservation measures such as consolidating our laundry and dishwashing loads, and updating our home with water-wise faucets and toilets and monitoring leaks. None of these measures are going to be enough if we increase the number of pools in the city. The potential, there's other things, you know, think about where we live in Texas. We are in central Texas, it's spring weather. Our above-ground pools, one of the, I have spent a lot of time reading. I don't speak for the heck of it because I don't like something or dislike it. I research, I read, I look at the pros, I look at the cons. One of the cons is having them in an extreme weather location, the damage that occurs to those pools, and we need to consider that. I know you want to exercise, you want to have water sports, you want to relax. We used to have pools in the city of Wood Creek operated by the resort and by the golf course. They chose to close it, but we have options. The Wimberly Inn has opened their pool for a daily pass, beautiful pool. We also have a pool at the lodge in the ATJ that where you can get a monthly membership. The swimming hole might be, is busy, it's beautiful, you can swim, it's clean, you can take a kayak, you can fish. And then you have Blue Hole Resident Day and seven, eight-day classes. Then Atutorium in San Marcos, which is beautiful and wonderful, and the YMCA. For those of you who have started with me, you know that for years I've been speaking about getting Wimberly and Wood Creek and the county together to bring a similar facility to the city as the YMCA in Brooklyn Springs with a pool and all the other benefits that arises. We have not been, we did not have, I did not have success in getting the parties involved to talk and discuss the possibility. All I have to say is, at this time, I'm sorry, children, I'm sorry, families. I have to say no to any more pools in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, the Crypto Regisdom.
Hi, Mr. Frisco. I live in Wood Creek with my husband and our two young children. So I am for above-ground pools. So what I wrote is, in the past few months, there's been a growing debate about the possibilities of above-ground pools in residential areas. But some argue against them due to concerns about aesthetics and environmental impact. There are a few reasons why above-ground pools should be allowed, allowing and recomprised legalization allow them. Number one, a safe and space for children. Above-ground pools offer a safe and cool environment for children who play and cool off during the hot summer months. With proper adult supervision, these pools can be an ideal setting for children to enjoy the outdoors, engage in physical activity, and develop essential swimming skills. By allowing above-ground pools, we provide families with a convenient and accessible recreational space within their own property. Number two, fostering a sense of community. Above-ground pools can act as catalyst for community building. These pools often become gathering spots for neighbors to socialize, interact, and form lasting bonds. They promote a sense of belonging, creating opportunities for residents to connect with one another and establish a supportive community network by encouraging above-ground pools with strengthened social ties and enhanced overall quality life in our neighborhoods. Number three, addressing the lack of community pools. To increase the number of in-ground pools, making it challenging for residents, especially those who have access to private in-ground pools to enjoy the benefits of swimming. Allowing above-ground pools provides practical solutions to problems, offering a viable option for individuals and families to experience the joys and health benefits of swimming without relying on expensive day passes to privately hold the hotels for driving to the community centers. As much as I love the Wimberly Inn, and we've done the day passes there, it's fifteen dollars a person and a gallon of four. We can only do that so many times before that possibly got up threats. Number four, a comprehensive alternative. In-ground pools are often prohibitively expensive due to installation, maintenance, and landscaping costs. Our family got numerous bills from local pool companies and achieved as far as ninety thousand dollars. That's simply unattainable for us. On the other hand, above-ground pools provide a more affordable alternative, allowing families to enjoy the benefits of swimming without breaking the bank. By permitting above-ground pools, we ensure that more people have access to the enjoyable and healthy activity regardless of their financial needs. And now for addressing environmental concern. Water conservation, number one, given the importance of water conservation, essential consideration of water resources. To mitigate concerns about water consumption during drought periods, above-ground pool owners can bring water in from an outside source, such as rainwater harvesting or trucking in cold water. Additionally, implementing measures like pool covers and efficient filtration systems can help minimize water operation and ensure that the water is dealable. Another issue is pool maintenance and aesthetic. Maintaining an above-ground pool in a manner that's both aesthetically pleasing and functionally suitable. Pool owners can adopt various strategies to achieve this. Landscaping and incorporating the pool to the overall gun-of-the-yard and enhanced visual appeal. Regular cleaning, appropriate chemical treatments, and proper maintenance procedures will share the pool.
Your three minutes.
Thank you.
Carol Gray.
I was going to give my three minutes to Aurora, but she did not use it. You know, I can keep on talking. So.
I think he would defer his three minutes to either of you two ladies because you're on roll.
Aurora. There's anybody.
You have anything else to say, Aurora?
No, I think he's talking to everybody. Chris, you can have my three minutes.
We need to settle this.
They want to defer to the family of four.
Give it up later. I don't know whose time you're talking about. Carol Gray, are you gonna speak?
No.
Okay, thank you. Nancy Antista.
Hello. I've been living here for fourteen years, and when we moved here, this was more for the adults, the older, retired people, and it had a golf course on it. And I'm very sorry, I raised two girls too, and when all of y'all moved in to this subdivision, you noticed we have a golf course. Our neighbors that live on one side of us have two young boys that play baseball, football, and soccer, and they use their yard and the golf court for it. We had a very nice front and backyard, and then we started going through a drought. And my husband is very proud of his landscaping skills, but we were forced to either get penalized for using extra water to keep his yard going, or we had to do something about it. So we eliminated our front yard, and we have rocks in our front yard so that we could have a dog that has a backyard. If you've gone over the single language at the end of Wood Creek Drive last summer, there was no water in that creek. So as much as I have to know a lot of kids, I was a teacher for fifteen years. The realization is, there is no water. And if there is no water to fill up swimming pools, and you have a sign at the stop sign as you're turning into Wood Creek that is demanding we cut our water usage thirty percent. We've already got rid of our front yard. We've got rid of our, all of the landscape we can possibly get unless we go solid rock. We've tried to redo our, our back deck. We were gonna close it in. We were got in trouble with the front. We can only use so much, and everything else has to be green because of water runoff. So I mean, as much as I love the kids, I mean, the realization is, this was a retirement for our community. This was, this is a golf course for the community. And I mean, you want us to, okay, if you want to do above-ground pool, then take the sign at the stop sign all the way. We should be able to water what little plants were allowed, what little bit of yard were allowed, and get rid of that, cut your thirty percent of water out. Because if they can have above-ground pool so that the children can swim and have a great summer, which I'm not opposed to, then by George, we should be able to, what little yard we're allowed to have, we should be able to water it.
Thank you. All right, we have Celeste and Nathaniel Smith who want to give their time to Joseph Smith and Nikki. Did you want to take your time as well?
No.
Okay.
So, my name is Nathan Smith, and I'd like to thank you all for all the hard work you do for our community and to reiterate my support for allowing above-ground pools in Wood Creek. At the PNC meeting last week, I heard talk about making it more difficult for residents to approach city council. However, I love the idea that our city council members in there are open hearing all residents and working to improve our city, we're proud of them, so I'm sure our community is seen. And I'm thankful that our citizens have such a open government that actively listens to its meeting. For half of our residents living on forty thousand or less per year, in-ground pools are financially hard to reach for many families. And as you know, free public access to swimming is limited to my existence in that area. Besides being a fun way to cool off, swimming and break the joints, it improves physical and mental health, adds some essential life skill, and for other kids, a chance to learn a practice of swimming early and consistently is vital for learning that skill. Families enjoying spending time in their backyard is perfectly even with the neighborly spirit of Wood Creek and our community values. This shouldn't be restricted to only wealthy who can afford an in-ground pool. None of the cities surrounding us, including Wimberly, San Marcos, Brooklyn Springs, Kyle, Austin, San Antonio, and more have any provisions against above-ground pools. They all allow them as the communities across Texas. As representatives of our community, I hope you believe as we do, the people of Wood Creek should have those same freedoms and opportunities as our neighbors. Our community is currently suffering from a drought, and water conservation is very important. These stationary water conservation measures currently restrict local water usage and apply equally to everyone regardless of type of pool. Such water conservation measures are independent from the city ordinances and can be adopted, adapted quickly based upon local conditions. This water conservation is already addressed for both above-ground and in-ground pool owners alike. And furthermore, the proposed ordinance requires that water be trucked in, and that above-ground pools will still be required to meet and cover these other requirements. And there's also a wonderful comment that I saw online about using local pools, both in-ground and above-ground, as a resource for fire departments in case of emergencies, and I thought that was just an excellent concept. Droughts happen in cycles, and they don't last forever. When the drought's over, we're expected to know that our city ordinance is already been updated, treat above-ground and in-ground pools. These families will make swimming accessible to their families. In conclusion, we urge you to allow above-ground pools in Wood Creek. This is a positive step forward for our community that aligns us with neighboring cities, supports families, promotes property values, and provides popular recreational activity for our residents to enjoy the outdoors. My family and our children, thank you for your kind consideration of our request, and I see my agreeing time to do it.
That's good. You have nine minutes.
Let me, Andy, I'm gonna cover the same thing, but I just want to make sure that my words are semi-harred and goes like. Something that wrong with speech. Dear Mayor Rastall and esteemed City Councilmember Wood Creek and Council and the rest of my residents here, I want to share my open experience. My spouse and I had a recent PZ meeting on June seventh. Prior to that time, it was like this. It was very cordial and genial. But in that meeting, what we witnessed was sad, disheartening, and concerning. So I feel compelled to bring it to your attention. Though many people shared their views for and against, a vocal subgroup individual at that meeting made sure the grievances were heard. They dominated the meeting with loud and relentless complaints. Unfortunately, their behavior had a negative impact on those attending, especially the lady who was sitting near us. She wished to express her support for above-ground pool at that day. However, due to intimidating atmosphere created by that oysters group, she hesitated to voice her opinion during the public portion of the meeting. Instead, she confided with us about her concern outside, in a parking lot, after the meeting had ended. Also, at that PZ meeting, what troubled me more were the statements made by a member of this particular group who, of course, possessed extensive experience in Wood Creek governance. Though they were former committee member or they were former council member or past mayor, naturally, their claim appeared credible because as an ordinary citizen with very limited knowledge of municipal government, I found myself unable to repeat their association at that moment. So determined to seek the truth, I dedicated the entire night after that meeting and upon day to conducting research and educating myself on the matter. And what I discovered was quite astonishing. Many of the claim may have this group were entirely false, designed for this lead and manipulate the public perception of Wood Creek governments. Contrary to what they insisted, council members do indeed possess the authority to place items on the agenda, add, modify, or remove ordinance. According to Texas Local Government Code Title II Subtitle V Chapter 22 Type A General Municipality, the city of Wood Creek operate under a mayor and five aldermen system. Alderman is basically a council member. In this system, one of the primary responsibilities of an alderman is to act as city legislature. In fact, the Texas handbook for mayor and council member is supposed to state that each one of these councilmen has a right to introduce new ordinance and amendment to existing one. Furthermore, there are no requirements stating that councilmen can only do so under the explicit directive of the mayor, city manager, or any other authority figure. Electoral officials, like our council member, they have a unique advantage. They're able to be in touch with the community and understand this ever-changing demographic. They have a core task of reflecting the will of people and upholding the principle of democracy. So it's crucial that we dispel these misconceptions and ensure that true prevail. Electoral officials deserve our trust and support, that they've worked to serve our best interests and to our community. Let not be swayed by false claims and misleading statements that undermine the air authority and our democratic process. I urge all of you to educate yourself on that, just like I did. Engage in constructive dialogue about the issues that affect our beloved Wood Creek. Together, we can foster an environment of informed decision-making and empower elected officials to feel the response to the integrity. Now allow me to share a brief history with you. More than twenty-five years ago, the G M N O family made a humble request to allow above-ground pools in a community. They were now along their design. Another Wood Creek family made a similar plea two decades ago. Recently, I saw two families socially expressing their longing for freedom to enjoy above-ground pool. And these sentiments do resonate with people in our community. One remarkable family, Richardson, attended the first council meeting on this matter, I think this April, advocated passionately for the poor bill and says be guilty for above-ground pools. Seven years ago, my own family made a decision to move to Wood Creek to care for my ailing mother, who is now her mid-nineties. She experienced immense pain and find it difficult to move. Water therapy in a pool would offer relief by relieving the weight and stress on her joint and back. Unfortunately, I agree with providing her with that solace remained unattainable due to the ban on above-ground pool. Now, it's disheartening to realize that while none of the cities surrounding us, San Marcos, Trinity Spring, Wimberly, Austin, San Antonio, countless others, imposed the city prohibes, prohibited banning on above-ground pool, Wood Creek continued the uphold this, this restriction. We find ourselves in a perplexing situation where almost all neighboring Texas city allowed their residents the freedom to enjoy above-ground pool without hindrance. Throughout the year, whenever we, my wife and I, our family, entire city employee, as neighbor to neighbor advanced, we consistently inquire about the possibility of lifting this ban. During the trying time of COVID lockdown, you remember how we were stuck in our houses, the kids were stuck with us? We implore, practically beg the city, just a temporary lift on this ban to recognize the tremendous recreational, physical, mental, and social benefit it would bring to the community. Regrettably, our plea were met with basically dismissive laughter. Even when we were exploring positive. Even when we were exploring possibility of a painting of burns, we were discouraged from pursuing it, because we were sure that it would be an exercise in futility. Therefore, we may not choice to hurt, but we could compel a master plan event. We actually can now hand in request to the city urging them to lift the ban. But I ask you, how long must a family wait? For us, some of you have that. It's appeared our patients have yielded no progress. Should we wait another ten years? Or longer? Will my dear mother, will she be alive next year? Will my kid graduate from high school before you guys finally decide, yeah, I guess you could have your above-ground pool? So, what is the basis of it? Even if you're not here, you can compare one way or another about above-ground pool. What we're talking about is the aesthetic police and basically the homeowner social mentality. How long do we expect residents of Wood Creek to live their lives under that mentality? Therefore, I stand for you that I firmly believe our founding father would commend the city council for placing this outdated ordinance on agenda, allowing us to engage in meaningful dialogue. We're not saying they didn't say they're going to take it, but at least it's on the agenda. So let me, my friends, but let me talk and start with a crucial point. The headland to a pool, but really have to do almost everything else for this community moving forward. It's called the aesthetic and the law. We need to shed light on an important aspect of city government that demand our attention. You know, how things do the aesthetic, how nice things look. It's crucial that we take a historical perspective and reevaluate the ban of above-ground pool in the context of promoting general health, safety, moral, and welfare of our community. In the past, local just local just by the enactment of ordinance and measure based on traditional purposes. However, of course, strictly interpreted definition of health, safety, moral, and welfare invalidating the law that did not directly relate to these fundamental principles. When it comes to rule established by HOA, they are often considered private agreement, and typically governed by deed restriction, so court don't mess with that. However, city government opened up a cost lawsuit when they imposed regulation primarily based on aesthetic. And that was the biggest reason at the PNC meeting. Aesthetic, aesthetic stake worth in effect, that was the majority of the reason in PZ meeting when they basically delayed this. So, I want to bring your attention to a landmark case of Stone versus City of Dallas in Texas.
That's, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you for the presentation, now.
Thank you.
Lorna Chakrap.
Well, that's kind of a hard act to follow. But I wanted to, first of all, thank you all for all the work that you do. Thank you, thank you. And everybody, thanks for being here. I came to speak in favor of the above-ground pools, and droughts come to an end. And the aspect of, of health is really something that's not been touched on a whole lot so far. But we ain't a bunch of spring chickens, you guys. I'm getting pretty creaky, getting out of bed. And at some point, it can be an extremely good therapeutic thing. So, for the older folks, like we're all getting to be, or lots of us are. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Lydia Jones.
Thank you, everybody. And it's, it's so much as saying no to the, I think, a waste of water, which is so precious now, being in a drought. I know people's wells are drying up. I know there's a lot of contaminants because the table is getting too low. So myself and a lot of my neighbors who are older, wiser than me, a hundred and one, ninety, ninety-eight, they all feel like, and I feel like, this is not the time to approve anything of a water source, fountains, above-ground pools, in-ground pools, if they can afford it or not. It's not about, for me, it's not about, oh, they have a pool and I don't, or they have an ugly pool and I don't want that ugly pool. It's about the water resource and protecting it for everybody. Because if you have to truck that water in, guess what? It'll come from somewhere. And I do know that small water companies, when they reach a table of over-usage, they get fined. People sneak it in, using water, and then we're all going to get hit with even higher water rate, because I know those water rates are going up. And I don't know how y'all want to fill up that pool, paint that water bill, but if I knew I don't, then I don't want it to fall on anybody else either for those water rates to go up. But being water source pressure that is as it is, I just say now is not the time to approve anything with water source. Thank you.
Kristen Weaver.
Hi. A lot of it was addressed here, and I was at PNC last week, and my husband also spoke how we are against the above-ground pool for many reasons that we spoke about last week, probably no reason to repeat it all. But one thing I would like clarity on is how this all came about, this discussion. What is the proper way? Because I thought things were to start at PNC, and all just seemed to, all of it sudden happened, and then a week later, we're here and now find out this is not a hearing, which I thought it was. And so I just like, understand how this is to work and you know, it's my understanding there was maybe one or two people that was pushing for this, and this has created a big stir and a lot of time and a lot of expense, I know, to get here for something that has been in the ordinance already. But one thing that does concern me about above-ground pool, we are on small lots. And if, you know, if above-ground pool is next to where I or anyone lives that might have a concern, I don't know how tall they sit off the ground. But I mean, it's realistic that, you know, privacy fence, with some, you know, you have your neighbor sitting up here on a above-ground pool, and you see him, you know, you've lost your privacy. That's one concern, you know, in addition to others that were spoken that I want to add to consider. That's it.
Yeah. You for better.
My boys went there.
Beth Medley.
Well, we have to, we have to.
Thanks for sharing. Thanks for being here. All right. Bill Medley.
I just wanted to speak to as far as the neighborhood and retirement community or whatever was mentioned earlier. I mean, it's times are changing. A lot of us are moving in here and it's, properties are changing and, but I don't want the Walmart above-ground pool thing, if that's what's in a lot of y'all's minds. There's aesthetically pleasing ways to do it. There's engineered ways to do it, because if you're worried about a pool collapsing next to your house, there's other ways of doing it better, where the, you have miter decks around them, and it's not. I feel like a lot of people think it's the plastic pipe, like it. But no, just more along with the building a sense of community, we mentioned earlier. I think that's a big thing. I mean, somebody next door, that'd be a great way to build that sense of community, meaning this. There's better ways to do it, but taking a step back and looking at the better ways to do it instead of just jumping the gun. A cowboy pool, though, I didn't know those weren't allowed. I mean, that seems like something that it's a, a, one thing between that and a swim spa, where swim spas are allowed, and that's not, and there's a lot of different questions that I have, and I was prepared for it. There's actually a hearing next time, not just shooting in the hip, so that's all really, I mean. But thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Paul Chakrap.
Paul. Okay. Please, why please? My wife Lynn and I moved here in twenty-fourth year. I'm a retired teacher, professor. I used to teach math. Okay, maybe we can connect on that. I had the privilege in my career to work with young people all my own. And it helped keep me young. And I want to say this about what it means to raise children. I raised three children here in Texas. Now, being a mathematician, I would have liked my children to just love math, if I got to. I would not have been able to get my son to school had it not been for athletics. Period. That was important to you. I'd have had trouble getting my middle daughter to school had it not been for music. She played trombone, no, saxophone, and was second in the state when she was a junior. She was that good. But why she gave it up is beyond me, and why my son gave up baseball is beyond me, but they did. My oldest daughter, she really surprised me. What took her to school was laughing. That's what she liked to do. I thought it was strange, but of course I encouraged her. And I want to point something out. I've heard like, and now's not the time. Folks, come on. One year to me is less than one eightieth of my life. It doesn't mean anything, another year. It's a meaningless statistic. But if you're ten years old, it is one tenth of your life. It matters. You feel it. How many of you remember what it was like when you were fifteen and just one year away from being sixteen and being able to drive? I want you to smile if you remember that. Okay. That's, that's what it's like for these children. Look, we're grownups here. If, if Joe and Nikki want to pay to haul in water, and not from some people who are out of water, there are places in Texas where there's plenty of water, enough to where they can sell it. And if they want to bring some in and put some in a pool, that doesn't affect me unless I let it. Unless I fret over, oh, my gosh, what are they doing? That's different. I'm not doing it. No. I, I, I just don't see it. I just don't see the argument in that. I don't see the problem there. So I'm letting the kids swim. And I'm just grownups, getting whatever.
Thank you.
That may bring a lot.
Thank you very much. Mark Wow.
Yeah. I'm in favor of a pool, a community pool. And the last two communities my wife and I had lived in had pools and had swimming. And sure, the HOA was a big cost for the HOA, in this case, I guess it would be the city. But I think for one thing, it would be more water conservative. And it it would increase our property value because amenities help your home sell and attract buyers. On the other hand, I don't think that above-ground pools will help your home value or your neighbor's value. And we have small lots, and it's a privacy issue too, but I just wanted to throw in my two cents. I'm in favor of one pool. And we support that.
Thank you. All right, that is all the in-person public comments. I will go through the ones that we've received via email. You can time me.
No. Read fast.
Yes, I will read fast. First, from Maureen and Patrick Mealy, Europeans in the City Council, we are opposed to allowing above-ground pools in the City of Wood Creek. We feel that these pools do not fit with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Next, from Lou and Joseph. Please note our opposition to any city ordinance in any shape or form which authorizes any above-ground swimming pool destruction. The city already has an ordinance in place prohibiting any above-ground pool construction, and we're sure it was passed for very good reasons. Currently, there are critical drought restriction signs from the H. Spinning Groundwater Conservation District around Wood Creek, requesting thirty percent less water use. They have as well offered, well, offered, so they pleaded that the pool can't be used by the public anymore, and our aquifers already stretched out as well. Lastly, above-ground pools are unattractive and adversely affect property values. We also asked that the city secretary read this objection into the record in any city meeting concerning any above-ground pool ordinance as well as reading it to any assembled audience there if possible. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. Our aquifer and property's value and the preservation for them are very important to us. Yeah, I will gab with you.
That's a librarian.
From Lydia Johns, Lydia's not here, right?
No.
Okay, from Lydia Johns, I have a couple of comments for the upcoming hearing about ground pool. This one's for the public comment section. During discussions, we have been focused on packaged versions of above-ground pools that are professionally installed. In watching some episodes of HVTV, it became apparent to me that there are other formats for above-ground pools. In one episode, a pool was constructed using a shipping container. Obviously, this would be different than the packaged versions and would have to be constructed differently. Another episode featured a pool constructed with a stop on pain. Both of these would be criteria as the ordinance is stated at this time. Still subject to inspection during installation, but also a whole lot harder to remove, especially the shipping container. I would like to see this discussed and allow, or specifically not allow. Maybe in the form of above-ground pool construction, must be in the form of easily removed material. Sincerely, sincerely, Lydia Johns, or others, is for PNC. The next, from Summer Whitten, and please keep your look, just phone call please. Summer Whitten says hello. Please say yes to above-ground pools. Peripety in the soul of life. This one from Sherry Lynn Lamaron. A picture says a thousand words. Direct condition critical, conserve usage by thirty percent. How does approving above-ground pools accomplish conserving water?
Jeff, there's a picture, our sign for the, for the meeting announcement, and then our water thirty percent.
Thirty percent reduction. Just the sign. Sally England, hello, am unable to attend the meeting on the seventh at City Hall. I would not want a above-ground pool next door to me, too much noise. I would lose what privacy I have. I've lived here for twenty-nine years, do not know what the restriction was back then. There were no pools above or in-ground around my house back then, Sally England. And BD. Baby. I'm so very disappointed that this issue is even being discussed when, as we all know, I've been under strict, about restrictions for years. The issue could be banning construction of all pools. I'm ashamed to even be associated with all of you. And, and baby.
It's all school computer.
Allison Hayes Lane, please accept my email as a note to above-ground pool being allowed will lower property value, water waster, danger for young children, animals if not properly fenced. I encourage Wood Creek to establish community pools with a membership fee I pay, better aesthetically for our beautiful neighborhood. From Cap and Barbara Horning. Aside from the large amount of water necessary to fill a pool, adding to that daily operation which requires replacement during our current stage for direct conditions, above-ground pools are unsightly degrade the natural views and landscape, act as passive death trap for birds and wildlife, and require a state mandated safety fence. They do not add to the value of the owner's property, but have been shown to devalue the neighboring properties. They are a chief unsightly blight on the common communities such as Wood Creek. We emphatically do not support a city ordinance which would, which allowed above-ground pools in Wood Creek. Dory Whitehead gave her comments in public. Merrill Whitehead. Dear elected officials and city manager, please be advised that as a resident of Wood Creek, I'm opposed to changes in the ordinances regarding the above-mentioned items. I oppose allowance of additional STRs everywhere in our city, and I also oppose above-ground pools. Please make this public comment a part of the reporting of the proceedings in the June fourteenth City Council meeting. Thank you very much, Merrill Whitehead. Kay Betts. I'm Kay Betts at Eighty-One Wood Creek Drive, and I support allowing Wood Creek residents to have above-ground pools. The positive benefits for families and children far exceed, in my opinion, the perceived objections. If our community wants to reduce water consumption, why don't we ban green grass lawns? And if we're concerned about aesthetics, why don't we regulate political signs or holiday decorations, both of which are not allowed in many HOA. And if we're concerned about aesthetics, why don't we regulate political signs or holiday decorations, both of which are not allowed in many HOAs? Aurora LeBron Birds. It's all white, Muniz. My name is Itzel White Nunez, and I live at 77 Wood Creek Drive. I work in Griffey Springs, and I have two boys. I'm totally in favor of having above-ground pools in my neighborhood. I don't think these pools harm any citizen or nature. I don't understand why some people insist on not allowing our children to have in the safety of their home a way to have fun, socialize with others, and enjoy the hot summers. Now, all of us have the possibility of living near the river or be able to use it as indicated by the rules of Wimberly and its surroundings. If it is a possibility of my neighbor building in his own home a healthy sort of entertainment on his own land, I do not see the problem. I just want to remind you that this land no longer belongs to us, the elderly. It belongs to the children and young people of the new generations. More and more, this neighborhood is filling up with young families with children. So sooner or later, they will demand these changes. What we do today can benefit them. Also, I repeat again, a pool is not a harm to the neighborhood. Darren White. My name is Darren White, and I live at 77 Wood Creek Drive, Wood Creek, Texas, 767. I am running to support the measure to allow above-ground pools in Wood Creek. I attended a previous meeting and spoke briefly supporting the changes to the ordinance. Please consider the measure for this year. I realize that there are dissenting opinions on the matter, but I believe that the measure is being unnecessarily sidetracked and postponed by procedural methods. This is not in accordance with public opinion and undermines trust in fair, representative, and above all responsive governance. These tactics will be taken into consideration in upcoming elections. Please allow above-ground pools for this summer and do not postpone the decision. The... Genoni or Genon, you know, to whom it may concern. I would like to support amending chapter 156, section 156.05a concerning above-ground pool. Texas Public Eaters should consider the adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 156, building ordinances, construction, section 156.05a above-ground pools of the code of ordinances, City of Wood Creek, Texas, for the purpose of allowing above-ground pools. Thank you. Rita. Bride or Street. Thanks for listening. All right. Rita Street or Stride, above-ground pool to short-term rentals. Hello, I'm Rita Street at 32 Wood Creek Drive. I wanted to voice my opposition to this council's agenda to change our neighborhood. I believe they are not considering what the majority of the citizens are for or against. I feel like our neighborhood has been hijacked by people that are going to destroy our property values and are only interested in promoting their agendas. And John Heffley and Nancy Britner, please read the following during the public hearing, the devon or comment section on June 14th of the City Council. We are against above-ground pools. This whole thing not only has been mishandled, but you tried to fast-track it. Your citizens are mindful of following rules. Why isn't counsel on that included in public comments? So, thank you all for your comments and for your attention. We will move into the agenda, starting with consent agenda. We'll break until 7:30. Five minutes. Yeah, they closed the doors, they take conversations outside. We're back in order. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving to the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes from five minutes.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
We were just handed these minutes.
Yeah.
Immediately before this meeting, so I don't prepare to consent, approve all of these minutes. So, the next.
Okay, they'll go to the workshop.
I just want to get them on the website. Anybody want a second?
Okay.
I'm sorry. Robert's orders is that we cannot approve minutes. Can you wait until the next regular meeting?
We need to get these up on the website. We haven't had anything posted since February. That's what we're trying to do. So, I mean, we can, we can go through these.
And we're mailed out earlier today.
We can, we can go into, I mean, we, when we go into workshop, you know, we come out of workshop and go into session. I mean, the workshop really is a special meeting surrounding, surrounding workshop. So, we can come out of the workshop. We can put this on the agenda for the workshop. We've got a few minutes to post it, but we could do that.
Okay, so I'm confused. So, when you said we couldn't do it, you mean we can have it in a special meeting portion of the workshop, right? That's not, so it can't be in the special meeting at all?
Can't be in the workshop at all.
It's not in the workshop, no. It's in the special meeting portion of the special meeting.
Right, because the workshop, you're, y'all were, I'm sorry, can't talk. Y'all were originally holding two meetings, a regular meeting and a special meeting, and then the workshop, the special meeting, a rare form of discussion. But according to Robert's rule, order 48.9, approvals of, approval of the minutes in an organization that holds regular meetings at frequent intervals such as weekly, monthly, or quarterly, the minutes of each regular or special meeting are normally read and approved at the beginning of the next regular meeting.
That's normally. That doesn't say anything about what we're doing here. So, counselor, let's proceed.
You can absolutely drop even Tuesday.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's procedure. All right, so the motion on the floor, and seconded, is to move these to the agenda, the special meeting that is surrounding workshop on Tuesday, 3:00. Any further discussion? All right, hold your roles.
Mayor, for example.
Aye.
Councilmember, any of Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember, Chris Germer?
Aye.
Councilmember, Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember, Deborah Ha? Aye.
Thank you. Revenantly, go onto the reports for ops, from officers and council liaison, starting with plan and journey.
At their June 7th meeting, PNC held a public hearing on the topic of above-ground pools. PNC made a motion regarding that issue after hearing from the public, which was move to postpone discussion about this issue until proper mailed polling has been conducted and the results have been shared with PNC, with the questions designed by PNC and via staff preparation and PNC approval on the questionnaire. And then PNC made a second motion. Motion to recommend to council that any existing or creation of new ordinances affecting PNC allow PNC to discuss any changes to ordinances prior to them being drafted.
Thank you. So, it's a recommendation that council provide details on ordinances and investments in incentives. The just.
The motion is, in a nutshell, from my understanding of it, is they would prefer not to have ordinances sent to them than to have a topic sent to them, they discuss the topic, make their recommendation, and perhaps... I wasn't quite sure.
Okay.
They just were uncomfortable and ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you. Order review committee.
I'm sorry, I'm still mentally processing what I just heard. I have about 100 questions now, but I will move on. The ordinance review committee reviewed a second draft with their book updates of chapter 93, fire prevention, and chapter 94 fireworks. A first draft draft for chapter 90, animals, animal control, ready, was discussed. They are set to move forward with another, another round of drafts at the next meeting. They will also discuss any next chapters they would like to review with council approval. And also a reminder to council to submit items you would like for them to consider as agenda items for council to discuss, then to be sent to them if and when appropriate at council's discretion. They asked if council chooses to do that and send them items that we focus on things that directly affect the day-to-day life of existing residents, so not all the legal stuff.
Thank you. I'm happy to say that the Parks and Recreation Commission has come to a finality in terms of going forward with our parks project. And Pat Rogers will be talking about that at length when that time comes.
Hopefully not too long.
Yeah, let's amend that at length part.
You got any advice to not drag it out?
And just as a note, y'all, we are going to move that agenda item to, just after the road project. Platinum Roads.
I will wait until we discuss the RFPs and roads.
All right, Mayor, for them fully.
Yes, sir. Let me see. The tree board had its last meeting on Monday, June 12. We've talked about Arbor Day, which we're going to celebrate in November. We're looking at locations, including Camp Young Today, trying to make sure that they have room for us on their schedule. If not, we'll look at alternative places such as the golf course or other places around the community. Looking at an educational event and also have a walk with, with... Blocky, blocky, people give a live demonstration of, you know, oak will, you know, living trees and show folks what it looks like and what it does as well. It'd be very educational. We're standing on top of the hiring of new city arbers. And I think that RFP or RFP has gone out, away applications, we're standing back for the system, interview and recommendations to the council on that position. Tree surveys in the works. In fact, we're going to do a full tree survey, but doing it in September, which is got too hot. We expect to report to council at large by October. Lastly, we need folks concerned, we've got a special people available, so if anybody like trees and they, they love our beautiful community, please let us know. And you can apply and join us on the tree board, not into the lessons. That's my report. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Full tree survey, is that of public, city-owned property?
Right, yeah, yes, city-owned property.
We're going back to, I was going to say, we're going back to see damage from the past, but we've already done the survey. We're going to go back and take another look.
Yeah, it's more of an updated survey.
Yeah, just like for full, I'm like, oh, we're going to count every single tree.
All right, report by the city manager.
First, City Hall will be closed this Monday, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth. Election package will be posted online by Thursday, June 22nd of this month. First day to revenger as a candidate for city council is Saturday, July 22nd. City Hall will be closed Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The city will have a float in the Wimberly July 4th parade, which is Tuesday. I'm going to drive a mule with the trailer, put some hailbells on there, decorate it real fancy and sparkly and stuff. So, any council members that wish to ride on the trailer, let me know. Or if you want to drive your own golf cart, let me know by Friday, because they have to know how many vehicles and how many people are going to be in the parade for us. So, if you want to do it, just let me know.
Friday.
By Friday. I got everybody t-shirts to wear. They are red with the city logo on there, so we all look spiffy and nice. And we'll have a fun time. It's, I believe, 7:30 till noon or something like that. Citywide garage sale is scheduled for Saturday, July 8th. Signing has been ordered. Posting notification and signup instructions will be posted Monday, June 19th. Trash the weekend after, so July 1st, we're going to have the garage sale on the 8th. On the 15th, we're going to have the bulk trash pickup for anything that you don't sell. You can put out and they'll come by. They're going to do it curbside. On the fifteenth, we're going to have the bulk trash pickup, for anything that you don't sell, you can put out and they'll come by, they're going to do it curbside. Um, posting notifications and sign-up instructions will be posted Monday, June nineteenth as well. Uh, they are coming, uh, down the street, and with their little grappler hook, just like they're picking up your trees. But this time, there will be other, hopefully other trash and living trees. Um, and we, uh, I believe we will be asking for addresses to give them as well, just so they don't miss anyone. Uh, I have been, I remember last meeting, um, we, uh, councilman Foley brought up traffic calming and a, uh, analysis of that. I have been working to get a quote, uh, they are working on that, hopefully here in the next meeting. Uh, in July, I will have a, a quote, because y'all wanted to know how much it would cost. And that quote is going to be, look at the cities, mainly the thoroughfares, the five thoroughfares in the city. Uh, look at, uh, if there needs to be or, or recommended calming measures, uh, where to place them, and also what height to place, um, at different places.
And this other quote for a study?
Correct, the, the analysis, the common analysis. Um, and so looking with those, they'll look at all the street traffic count, look at how roads are, and they'll not only come back and say, oh, we need a common measure here, but this is probably with that kind, I mean, whether it's a gate or a wall, or not really, but a bump or, or something like. Correct, they, they do this for next stop, and so bring us on the same angle to do this analysis. And that's all I have.
Good, on the traffic thing, let me know, we've got a lot of data for most radar stations, we can share with them.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm interested to see how that comes out.
Yeah, and what they end up doing usually for that study is putting two of those rubber strips across that measure both volume of car and speed.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Good, okay, very good. One last thing about it, um, if there's one at either end of Wood Creek Drive coming up the hill from, from water crossing, and one all the way at the other end, so we can measure how many vehicles actually going through on elementary school days, as an example.
Right, well, and, and that's the thing, you know, we, elementary school's out, we have to wait till September, so I don't know if we want to wait that long. That's something that I'll bring to council. Once we get the quote, we can work on the timing, how soon, and that stuff. But right now, I'm just worried about getting the quotes, seeing if these are feasible, or if we need to put that in the budget, uh, for this coming year. So, uh, yeah, it's, because being worked on, it's coming soon, and we can do the details on.
Um, next on the, uh, report agenda is from our city attorney and a legislative update.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief. Uh, this was the most anti-city legislative session, uh, in recent memory. Uh, as a practical matter, the target cities for both the capital were not cities like Wood Creek, but cities like Wood Creek are collateral damage to a lot of the bills that were being considered. I am only going to touch on three primary topics that I think are important. And if the council would like to get more information during the workshop, I'd be happy to provide that on Tuesday. Um, there were over two dozen bills that were passed related to property taxes. And the simplest way to describe the impact of those bills is that the pendulum has swung back from the appraisal district to the people. There have been a lot of complaints about the, the protesting process, personal property taxes, business property taxes, uh, as well as exemptions for sixty-five and over, and a number of issues. Uh, I, I think one of the, the few bipartisan issues that did occur in the legislature was the general consensus that the property tax system was, uh, out, outbalanced. And so the bills that were passed, attempt to restore that balance, the proof will be in the pudding. Uh, the second topic, uh, that is probably one of the most important is short-term rentals. And, and for those that, that may not fully understand, uh, the legislative process, bills that were introduced, you know, in, in, in late December informally, and January formally, are not always the bills that end up getting adopted. Uh, the bills that were introduced at the end of last year, beginning of the session, January, uh, related to short-term rentals would have massively kneecapped a city's ability to regulate short-term rentals. It would have placed blanket prohibitions on a number of regulatory tactics that cities use to manage the presence uh, and expansion of existing short-term rentals. Over the course of the legislative session, the, uh, the, the, the city lobbying effort uh, was quite effective in watering down that short-term rental prohibition, such that the bills introduced at the beginning of the session don't look anything like what ultimately passed, which is essentially a, a one-year task force. Uh, they're gonna, they're gonna take a look at this short-term rental issue, they're gonna come back and talk to, uh, the, the legislators next session. This conversation is not over. Uh, this is something that I think will absolutely be a hot topic in future years. It's hard to tell what's going to happen, there's clearly, not just in Wood Creek, but in other communities, is a, a vocal group of people that, that really want to rein in STRs. But, you know, as, as we have discussed, and we'll discuss again in the future, the law places some real challenges on that. And yet you've got, you've got this interaction between existing law and legislative preferences, and, and the how they're going to interact. That's the now, uh, the short-term rental, uh, restrictions that were creating such concern a few months ago, fortunately did not pass as regularly. Uh, the third final issue is probably the single most apparent bill as it relates to municipalities, and that's what is being referred to as the preemption bill. Uh, HB twenty-one twenty-seven. Uh, one of the tactics that was employed by the legislature of this session in the anti-city, uh, uh, thematic approach was a desire to create a consistent regulatory structure from Beaumont to El Paso, and the Red River down to the valley. They want the same regulations when you're in each of the two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties and all the eleven-hundred-plus cities, so that businesses and individuals know what the rules are going to be. Uh, those opponents to the preemption bill, myself included, argued the rules in Westlake need to look different from the rules of El Paso. The rules of Wood Creek probably should look different from the rules in Dallas. And unfortunately, the bill which ultimately passed, uh, it's, it's, it's threatening. It, it creates uncertainty as to what actual subjects have been preempted. This, this appears to be a pretty intentional effort on the part of legislators, who basically have said, well, you know, we'll know it when we see it. And so those opponents, Texas Municipal League included, of the preemption bill, who are concerned with the legislature's attempts to interfere with local control, they're already gearing up for a lawsuit. This bill will be the subject of litigation for the next two years. Um, it will be local litigation, it will be statewide litigation. I think you're probably going to see this issue addressed in the new appellate court is being considered. Uh, so, uh, right now, it's something that we need to be acutely aware of. I think you were asking me how this bill affects city of Wood Creek the most. I think you probably have a conversation about our ability to regulate activities within the ETJ. Um, and we'll talk about that as we get closer. That's the end of my update. I'll be happy to provide more information on Tuesday during the workshop.
Mayor for Tim Foley. Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, just one question, um, looks like on page, uh, thirty-three of the packet, there's discussion on House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine, it looks like it did pass, talking about the planning shot clock and whatnot.
Yeah, that's actually one of the other big issues, the thirty-day shot clock basically was, was removed.
No, it's good or bad for us?
Great for us.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't, I'm sorry, if you have something else, I'm sorry.
No, that's my, I recognize, councilmember Germer.
Thank you, sir. Um, on the planning shot clock, what we established with that document, it's untouched by this particular.
That document still is in play, what we no longer are at risk of is having applications approved by operation of law, because we've taken thirty-one days to rule on it, which essentially was the biggest problem with those application. So, uh, there probably is not a need right now to change what we've done, um, but.
But doesn't the, doesn't the law say specifically that it's okay to do that?
Yeah.
To have this calendar?
Yeah, absolutely, right, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that what we've recently done, that, that didn't.
I'll get it.
Um, the other one I have is, does the HB thirteen eighty-one, which is about regarding, uh, public hearings for planning and zoning, I, it says that, I don't see a change really, but how do you, could you describe what was changed?
Uh, no, I can't, because I don't see a change either.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Yeah, and, and what I have not done is gone through and read the language of the hundred-and-fourteen bills that are listed in this seventy-seven-page document. You know, uh, as, as always occurred in the, in the weeks and months shortly after the session ends, everybody's kind of looking at September first and saying, and, and as a note, both of these bills go into effect on September first, trying to say what exactly is happening here. I don't see any change on, on how the planning and zoning process works.
Thank you. The other one I have, uh, to, this is more just informative, uh, HB forty seventy-seven, which is property tax exemption for those sixty-five or older. Um, this is more an announcement to our citizens, because we passed, um, a property tax exemption for sixty-five or older on, on third tax exemption. And what this does, and correct me if I misunderstood, which is, if automatically now happens, they don't have to apply for it. They will have to apply for it.
Yeah.
In a special way.
Yeah, and I think that's actually a pretty good way to describe a number of the two dozen different property tax-related bills. It's, it, it now creates a series of automatic actions that address things which previously had to be actively sought after by that. So I, I, it's, first, it's, it's hard to tell for a lot of these things exactly how the appraisal districts are going to implement them, but I, I, I think that one I read the same way.
Um, I'm going to go back to twenty-one twenty-seven. Um, well, actually, I'm going to go back to, I'm going to discuss it in context of a, how it works. So something is sent to the governor's desk, and I read something that says he can veto it, he can pass it, or let ten days go.
Yeah, which is automatically.
So then, if he does nothing, it's already sent.
So, it, it's already sent.
Twenty-one twenty-six.
This bill has already been sent.
Yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
That's number highs, if you have something?
Oh, I, I, my question was, so are we just going to ask questions in the next meeting, but then we started asking for the ones? I mean, I have a list of things that will directly impact the city, uh, like littering is now a criminal event. Uh, cities can be subject to thirty-party reviews for inspection through development agreements now. Uh, the zoning thing covered, it was cleared. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I saw a question about, it doesn't look like it changed anything. There's an agricultural bill that I wasn't really clear how it would impact us or not, because it seems to kind of expand and eliminate city's ability to control that.
Yeah, that's a pretty important one, but we don't have a lot of the ag property that would be subject.
Yeah, except for we do have ag district in our code.
Yeah, we don't actually have the ag property. We got a district in the code, but what, this, this is more of, of, of the, you know, properties that have hundred-acre parcels in them, uh, which, which, you know, if we don't have a tier.
Uh, yeah, in our ETJ, but not part of the city yet. Um, so then there's annexation of property in a water and sewer district, solar pergolas cannot be prohibited, we can't stop people from putting in solar pergolas now. They can't be subject to like, uh, like building code essentially, which was interesting to me. We talked about the fighting shop talk, uh, there's a whole bunch of stuff about if we were to hire another peace officer, that was really, really important. And I know that's on the staff's radar for something that they would like us to consider the code enforcer slash, well, they were talked about as a peace officer at one point, so it's just, there's certain requirements for people that serve those kind of jobs. And there's a whole bunch of stuff in here about, about that, and then, um, the, okay, so the political reporting bill, our staff has to publicly host all the campaign finance documents now for any officials. Um, there's a preemption on building material bill that I thought was interesting, that would impact us. Uh, oh, the building fees, we cannot charge certain fees now for building permits. Uh, plumber, you don't have to be a plumber to tie into main sewer lines now.
Yeah, that all, that, that regulation's actually been, that's the way it's been for the last four years.
Mm-hmm. Well, well, like I said, there's a new bill on it, so I wasn't aware that, it's like the public hearing one, it's like, what is this bill about, if it's just restating what already was. The values-based fees, I thought was interesting for our city, specifically when we were talking about the short-term rental, some of these things, it basically is talking about how you cannot deny fees based on the amount that it could cost the city for review, which I thought was really interesting, that's HB thirty-four ninety-two, Stephanie Springer. Um, those were the ones that caught my attention besides the ones that y'all have already talked about, but I have loads of questions about like, how is it important is it that you get in action about this stuff, it's, you know what I mean? Or is it sort of just like deal with it if it comes up and becomes a problem, or, you know?
Just like we do every two years.
Actually, yeah. Yeah, so that was my question of, if, if there are things here that are directly impacting our current policy code, I mean, we know you have to get in alignment with state code, so what is sort of the idea for us? Because this is my first time going through an legislative session as a council member, so.
So, and it, it's a process, you know, it's like, like, you know, we look at that, kind of says staff especially looks and and says, well, this one is going to end by the shot clock thing, you know, so what needs to be changed? So we'll, you know, work together, we'll work with legal counsel and staff, and as these things come up that are going to require some adjustment to our ordinances or required resolution or something, then we'll break them basically one at a time.
And, and, and this is one of the areas where TML and the TCAA cover the effect, I mean. It's the, you know, rather than have eleven-hundred different cities try to figure out what the heck all these bills do, you know, this is probably one of the most valuable, you know, services that, that these organizations can provide. Uh, you know, TML right, right now is probably, you know, drowning in trying to figure this out. And so I would expect after the, the next couple legislative sessions are, or special sessions are done, where it doesn't look necessarily there's going to be any city-related bills, but, you know, you, you don't, you don't put a bow on the session until the specials are done. So, uh, I would suspect in August, uh, we're going to get from TML a, an expanded, uh, final report that, that talks about the practical implications of these bills, rather than provide a recent summary of it.
And I guess I wanted to provide the ad hoc update, essentially, a couple of weeks ago, we all just kind of pressed pause on the finalization of setting anything up. We knew some of this stuff was going to be impacting the work we've done, specifically the ETJ and the shock box, um, like the conservation measures we were trying to take, so that's something that, um, we're going to have to kind of dig back into now. Maybe not as the whole collective group, but, yeah.
Do you have a follow-up?
Uh, you entered, I was asking about the special session, and you did care of that, so thank you.
Um, we're gonna move on?
Yeah.
All right, we've got, um, item number eight is the discussion to take helpful action on the public hearing considering STRs. Um, Mayor for Tim Foley.
Yes, sir.
Seven is the public hearing.
Yeah, let's go ahead and, and, and call the item and, and stuff, what they're going to do, schedule it, move forward.
Okay, okay, so I remember seven public hearing for the adoption of ordinance, amending the above ground pools ordinance, is when we hear back from the planning and zoning commission with their report, then we will schedule a public hearing, um, for, um, the council to take that.
And, and one of the alternatives that, that you, I, I've seen in a lot of cities that I've worked for, is, is in light of the fact the council needs two days per month, uh, where you've got city staff here twenty, once twenty-five days a month, it's not uncommon to say, city staff, uh, please, as soon as P and Z is ready to go, schedule the, the public hearing for the next available, uh, hearing. But y'all, y'all obviously still have the right to hold on to that yourselves and do it.
I move that we wait till we have the P and Z report, discuss it in a meeting, and then make a decision on whether or not to proceed with a public hearing.
Sure. Second, Mayor for Tim Foley. Um, I think that's wise.
Yeah.
Um, in order to not end up in the situation that we're in now, um, and be fair to everyone to have a chance to speak and be heard. Um, so, any other discussion?
Can you just give me a little clarification? No, you read that, we wait until we hear what?
Yeah, we'll get the, we legally have to wait for, what we could, the, the motion could be stacked once the report is submitted to them, you go ahead and schedule a public hearing on the next thing. And I am asking that we get the report, it gets on a council agenda. We see it and then council collectively decides if we want to move forward with our public hearing because the message of the public hearing to the public is essentially we're about to pass this. So this is your last hurrah of discussion. And so we we want to, I mean, we need to collectively decide the direction we want to take. So, okay.
I also understand that the P and Z had a, uh, a motion to do a, a survey throughout the city to find out what everybody in the city wanted to do rather than just the people who showed up here. And, uh, if that's the case, then it would also that is their prerogative to do that.
Oh, they're not, they're, they're not going to submit their report until they get surveyed.
Right. And at that point, perhaps they, the decisions can be made by P and Z and by council.
And, and I, and I'd like to just add, you know, Kevin and I had, had a really good conversation with Chair Adam Ford. Um, this afternoon where, where I, I addressed, you know, someone, somebody had posed a question to me, well, what happens if P and Z just decided to do nothing, right? I think that's a question that a lot of people have raised. Um, that, that's not where we're at, but in the event that's what's happening, then they're failing to fulfill the duties and you put other people in that, that place. And so it's hard to tell because there's no bright line, right? Is it thirty days? Is it sixty? Is it a hundred and twenty? I, I don't know the answer. Uh, what, what happens on one issue may be a little bit different than the next. Um, but, but so far when I've observed, and I watched last night, uh, all of the May and June meetings that P and Z had and, uh, I've, I've got no real concerns procedurally with how they're approaching this.
Then we have a mic on the floor. But we're being to, um, wait till we do have a report from P and Z before we schedule um, the discuss and then start with the schedule of the public hearing. Yeah.
Yeah, let's go right.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey, aye. Councilmember Chris Schummer, aye. Councilmember Bob Henry, aye. Councilmember Deborah Hines, aye. Mayor for ten, Grant Cole, aye.
All right, next item on the agenda, number eight, discussion to take powerful act on scheduling a public hearing concerning SDR amendments.
Yeah, I'm making, I'm making a motion that we schedule a public hearing concerning proposed SDR amendments to the Code of Ordinances Land Use Regulations Adhering Short-Term Rents.
I would second that.
Uh, okay, my motion, just a couple of quick things. Um, you know, we have a P and Z recommendation in, in this case that's based ninety-three of your packet. Uh, you know, we are listening to the public, we're helping consulting with, with council. So I think, I think uh, under law, it's time for a, a public hearing on this. So, uh, that's the basis of my motion.
When would you see the, the public hearing?
Uh, Kevin, what, what do you think? I mean, we're looking at July, the July meeting or do we have this a standalone? Um, meetings since there's probably going to be a lot of interest.
If we, like, try, there's quite a venue, maybe to, other than city hall. I don't know if we can, uh, I know CYJ is on the question. They have a summer camp.
I guess the part.
Yeah, I mean, July will be tough if, if you got, like, you don't have a space yet.
Yeah, um.
It's going to be respectful and just kind of listen, like, the F W or something or?
I think this is one of those situations where, where do you guys make the decision on when and where or do you delegate to Kevin?
I would delegate.
Yeah, because he's already that, you're already got. Um, and, and I think Kevin can be a little bit more nimble and responsive if a space opens up and presents itself. Uh, y'all are free to provide some guidelines to it, right? Kevin, don't schedule the, the public hearing, you know, after nine PM. Don't do it on a Sunday morning and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But uh, I think delegation might be an appropriate way to allow him the most flexibility and way on the calendar.
Would say in the evening on a weekday.
Yeah, my feeling, do you want a special standalone meeting or do you want it tied to the, um, just a regular council meeting?
And, um.
I'd like to stand alone.
Yeah, a special, special meeting and just so y'all, as a reminder, uh, to do anything on that meeting would require an extra vote.
So take four votes in order for it to be passed whenever you all decide. That's the, kind of the downside to the special meetings rather than a regular meeting. Regular meeting is just majority, special meeting, you have to have that, that extra vote.
So, so as, 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 that approach that is often taken will be scheduling a special meeting for the purpose of holding the public hearing and then the placement of a action item on the next regular meeting.
That has to be within a term of my days from each other. I don't know that we need it in a standalone meeting just because I believe that we have heard and heard and heard. I am not worried about the votes though. So if it's a special meeting, I think it's fine. And I, I would like Mr. World to have the discretion of a location more than anything. I, to me, that's most important. And also weekday and outside of working normal business hours, so working in a general.
First, I'm remembering on, on the lead up to the posting and does that timeframe, how much time? Then basically two weeks.
How much time needs to, the, the public notices need to go out ten to fifteen days depending on certain situation, you know, we have the letter and then we have the newspaper. So the practical matter, it's, it's got to be two weeks before the actual schedule.
Exactly two weeks, it would start it right now.
Whenever the letters go out, the hearing can't be held less than two weeks.
Less than two weeks.
Hey, I mean, it's, and again, it's, it's a, there's a ten day limit for one issue and a fifteen day limit for another. So I just tend to operate on fifteen days.
So we'd have to get letters out by, um, into this month.
Well, and this, this flexibility is, you know, if, if, if he finds venues that only has four days available in a month, right? You know, you, you adjust your notice process to reflect whatever date the hearing is going to be held.
I would say the second half of July, to be honest as well, just listening to your report earlier. We have a ton of stuff going on in the first two weeks of July. So, I mean, we can always add another thing, but honestly, it looks like we're going to have a lot of overtime and stuff scheduled. Also, we already have all of our normal meetings in the first two weeks of July anyway. So I think the second half of July, location dependent weekday after five thirty.
Just, um, just for what it's worth, I mean, I did put an agenda item for workshop discussion on, um, on for the type and frequency of meetings. So, um, depending on what y'all decide to do, what we decide to do as council, I mean, we could go to two regular meetings a month, um, and be able to incorporate a special, I mean, a, a public hearing around a regular meeting even in, like, like July.
And you meaning too regular specifically using that word, okay.
I mean, it's, it's, I just wanted to tell you, on the agenda, um, just wanted to know that it is an item for discussion would, it could come in handy at this.
So where we're, where we're at now is we've got a motion of the second to just set a public hearing and I think the consultants just need to give Kevin this. Uh, and, you know, for venue and, uh, you know, anytime, okay, let me say.
Well, I need to know, are you, do you want it special meeting or do you want it, uh, where you're going to have to have the, the super majority or do you, or do you want to have the, the meeting separate and then we can have a vote at a regular meeting? Kind of how, let me know how you, like I said.
What I, what I would suggest again, and just in terms of flexibilities, there's no reason that you can't set the public hearing with the discussion and take possible action. And also put it on the subsequent regular meeting in, in, in the event y'all don't take that.
Let's do that.
As long as they're in that window.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I see. If, using, using, and I think second half of July is a good idea. Uh, I think if you drop it in the third or fourth week of July, fourth week of July, actually is what I think would be most appropriate. Because that will put the August second Wednesday within the window.
Yeah, I, I like that. That gives us flexibility. But those are your instructions. So next we go to the motion and then.
I'll get, I'll get on that.
Before, before we close the session, can we talk about the materials that we would like press for that agenda?
Well, I don't know. Is that part of the, what's on the, the agenda?
Yeah, I think, I think the agenda would probably just say, let's do that. And certainly, you said you've already got, is there an item for this on workshop?
No, but it could be just put.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me to submit that?
Yeah, you do, right there.
I will.
I knew you would.
Uh, if anybody wants their own, any documents, uh, make your own and we will combine all of the documents uh, into one added item.
So the motion on the floor is to, um, set up a public hearing, um, at, and then at the discretion of the city manager. Um, on, on basically date and venue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, my question is first to the city attorney. Previously, you had offered advice to council regarding SDRs. Um, would you summarize that advice for me?
No, because this is not an agenda item that, that seeks for that. Yeah, well, I, I, I like, I, I think, I think the, during the workshop, um, because there's still a second session components of this advice that needs to take place.
Okay, so maybe this, my question goes to I don't know, um, because what I'm seeing in the package there's previously we've had, uh, staff say that they're going to, they're creating some rep edits or including some things based on the discussion we had during the permit process. We were going to add some of these regulations into the document. Are those reflected in what's in the packet?
No.
They're no joke in that. So the packet is giving manually reference, reference.
I can answer the question. What, what Councilmember Graham was asking about is, in the last workshop, we worked on the, the kind of condensed permit that you two created together and the edits we made are not reflected in what's the materials in this packet right now. So that's what he's concerned about. And to answer your question, I think the goal is, is to put that on the workshop so we can workshop the materials where we're kind of called a public hearing. We're going to workshop the materials next Tuesday, finally adjust whatever to come to that public hearing. So we all get a consensus on the materials we're liking. That's what's going to go to the public is the final draft for them to come and actually be prepared to finally speak on what they like and don't like, knowing where we're actually at.
Once again, this is Mr. Foley's item that he put on. He put on the attachments, not city staff.
I understand.
So like I said, if there's, if there's paper or, or, or references to SDRs that you wish to include in that discussion, please put that on the agenda for the discussion and when we put it all together in the SDR discussion. But that's a, um, uh, the permit wasn't on there because Mr. Cooley did not put it on.
Uh, my other question in regards to, we've had discussions on council regarding making sure that ordinances get a legal review before we finalize the pass. Um, do we have enough time for that process? Because this is a, not a light issue. There's possibility that we could block prudently.
I agree.
And I want to make sure that we have legal input on the final document, like, so we'll have, I want to, so possibly next workshop coming right up regarding to kind of create a draft ordinance.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's going to be a this or that situation. I don't have any idea the direction you guys are going. And so I'm going to put a, a menu of options in front of you.
Okay, so you will be.
Yeah, I mean, this is already kind of in the works.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll have those two things though.
Uh, no, we'll conceptually have them on Tuesday, right? I mean, uh, uh, you know, Tuesday will be an opportunity for us to, you know, here's the general, uh, you know, menu that I'd like to make. Please provide your specific dietary requests on Tuesday, right? And so, and so, you know, it's a basic, as, as of right now, the two versions are, are, are essentially, uh, the reflection of the P and Z recommendation and then a reflection of, of what I would call kind of, and, and I probably will regret jumping on this grenade later, my version of, of that which reflects the legislation and the Supreme Court case, which is currently pending.
Great. So that's what I was kind of having a question. I still, um, you have the, thank you.
Um, it's totally intended. You're talking.
Thank you. Um, so that's what I, one of my main intentions is I wanted to see something. So once we have these discussions in workshop about these options and we make adjustments, it'll still go back to you for a final review.
Right, right.
That's why we have enough time to do all of it. If we're scheduled to.
Funny time.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
And he's talking.
I, I kind of have a similar question. I want to make sure that when we have the public hearing, we'll have options, but you know, we can still tweak those.
Of course.
And then again, I kind of whatever we decide.
Yeah, I mean, you know, forgive me for, you know, using a term over and over and over again, but we are measuring twice and cutting once, you know, and yeah. And so this, you guys have put a ton of work into this. This is not something that we are going to, and again, another, we're not, we're not fast tracking this. We're, we're being methodical in the approach and, and the direction the council ultimately chooses to go will be based upon a document that reflects your preferences and your approvals as, as mayor cannot have. Yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to get, I'm not, I'm not going to hand you a document you're seeing for the first time and, and y'all will be asked to go. Yeah, whatever document that we, we have going to bring to the public hearing will reflect the preferences that we discussed on Tuesday.
Thank you, yeah.
Any additional discussion with the ticket vote?
Well, and this is Daniel Sa. Okay.
I just want to be saying that I'm.
The, the motion is to schedule a public hearing on SDRs. And to give city manager discretion on finding venue and timing. That essentially what we've got. That's the. Overall.
Councilmember Chris Schummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Henry.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor for ten, Grant Cole.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
That's the unanimous, we thank you very much. Um, let's go ahead and bring in our, um, history papers. Hold it up, please. Yeah, we'll take about a few minutes, right? You said two minutes, fair, two minutes.
I get it. And, and actually you're right, the video maybe.
You hear that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So how many words do you have? Three?
Uh, three. There, there's some, I think some could have gotten.
I don't know what you're talking about.
They switched off how they do, like, who gives the awards, that even if we had like the people from Oregon that were pending. I'm not saying I'm anti-Oregon. I'm just saying, it, it's just one of those random things. I, I believe that we could have won more wins. I will say dripping spring. I was a little sad about our, so we got like a second place in, um,
Oh, dripping did?
In news photography, um, and the winning photo was like a kid like crying over his like veteran father's, saying, you know, like, I'm gonna be that one. So, yeah, but I, I was really happy with it. I'm sorry. Um, so it was a couple of different ones. I don't remember what our second submission was, but I had gone to the capital the day that the returns last year and took a bunch of pictures there.
Wow.
Um, that basically I like, this was all for dripping springs because I was going to get, but, um, basically I like interviewed sort of like different people from like pregnancy centers throughout Hayes County and like different, like even nurses and like women's organizations and just sort of said like, hey, here's how this is going to affect women's health outside of like, you know. So, I, I was also really hoping that that public question would win like general excellence, but it was a very.
Bringing back. Well, you're on the map. That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, bringing it back to order at a twenty.
I just wanted to give an update on that item that, uh, Mr. Roll said. He said, uh, so we're going to include all the documents for planning and zoning. The recently reviewed and updated permit from the May workshop. And then he mentioned any documents submitted, and I added this, in a timely manner, any council member. So if somebody wants to get him something before noon tomorrow to add in the packet, they have that note, but I'm not personally attaching everything because they have the most updated files.
Yeah. Uh, draft documents on the SCR stuff tomorrow at noon, but I'll certainly circulate them prior to Tuesday.
Okay, now I'll add that.
That's really all we can ask. All right, so, um. Now we've lost our. So we, um, this is, uh, this is item number nine on the agenda. Just got to take possible action on the twenty-three Wood Creek Road project R and P. Um, this is, uh, you want to. Please with this.
Just briefly, uh, a certain reserve for first.
Yeah, you know, if you sit, sit right there, then you're, if you stand up in front, we just get to the party.
There's a lot of videos of people's belly button.
So, yeah, you just put next to man and she. Not really dangerous. That's not real, little danger. All right, please go ahead.
Okay, um, Kate Forintson submitted the RFP to the road, uh, that's again for Mill and overlay. Project in our June first meeting, uh, the Flatland Road panel. Gabriel Davis had gave us a presentation. And now he stated that we had kind of compressed their normal time. We're doing this kind of scope of the project. But it was about ninety percent complete. The background material, project maps were really meticulously prepared. The panel was very impressed with that. Um, there, there were some final ad, uh, edits that needed to be done before you can submit for a bid. And I have some concern about some quantities on certain roads, but I'm sure those will be answered. I have, um. I talked to Eric Jones and kind of gave him a brief overview of what we were trying to do. And he said that. You know, it's going to be close, but we can compare, uh, twenty twenty-one numbers to twenty twenty-three numbers as far as cost construction. And I compared, uh, Wood Creek Road numbers to our current quantity, but the quantities are adjusted somewhat. I mean, I'm much more optimistic that we can get the majority of this project done with asphalt overlay.
No audience? Or, sorry, there's.
Darn.
Go on.
Okay.
Uh, this makes you speak up so that.
Oh, okay. And then, um. Well, I guess we'll hear from Mr. Davis. Would you like to add something? We will be going out for advertising this project a little more aggressively than we did the last time. Make sure all the big guys are.
Yeah, so, you know, just introduce myself. I'm Jeremiah Davis with Avery's and Associates, and I happen to be the engineer of record for this Mill and Don't Relate project. Here in City, so Mill and Don't Relate project, the project for about thirty-two streets. Um, you know, after going through and ignoring the, the plan fields and details and. And the quantity takeoffs, also feel really good about where price is going to come in with the work. That you guys want from this project, which is primarily mill and don't related. Um, as well as any full depth repair for any of it, you know, areas that are. Are more, that are more in need of that repair. Um, one thing that I was really actually happy to hear, um, and it was just by chance. Um, was the last thing was that the, that the road panel discovered that Deerfield Road is going to be funded separately. Uh, through a different grant, and that actually happened to be the most expensive on our agreement sheet. So. To be able to, uh, put that one aside, and we do have plan sheets prepared for that one. So. Uh, even though Deerfield will be included with this package, uh, we still have complete plan. Sheets for that one, so. Yeah, so that one will be prepared and ready for whenever they're. So. Yeah, and some of the things that we were doing in addition for ninety percent typically, you know, most of the time in project development, you have. Preliminary phase, you have a pre-final phase, and then you have the final phase. Uh, with this one typically at the, at the end of the project is when we start looking through some detailed sheets because. Once we've finalized a project layout and, and got a degree of understanding with all the design concept, that you start getting the details that a contractor needs to know. So that's, that has been. That level of effort between ninety percent and hundred percent for this project. So. Um, you know, and then some of those like the pavement marking details, we, we started putting attention on it. On the twenty-sixth splitter islands, the small splitter islands that are in the street with the trees that are there. So we were able to get some attention to those and, and find some ways to improve the safety of those, of those conditions, things like pavement marking and green letters.
When you expect those final numbers sufficient that we can let it in bid?
Oh, I, I'm looking forward to stamping on sheets, essentially, credit. So, okay, I've been really. Have this, we don't realize this last bit earlier, that we may compare Tuesday as this right now with the, I'm looking to do so. Um, and, and that one, which is separate quantities that you'll find in both the product manual and the plan sheets itself. And then, uh, you know, obviously with this cost to all of those quantities and. And there's some different ways. You're not just limited to looking at what Texon has done for local, uh, cost per unit. You know, there, there are things that Avery's, we've done projects in Astroville, you know, we've done the, you know, Wood Creek Drive. Uh, project here. So tho- those are also, uh, references that we use. So sometimes people might think we're just limited to looking at something that Texon has. Um, but there's more local things. So, and as well as, I, I always think, you know, as I described last time, I do feel that this project is going to be more competitive. Um, and you should get more bids because this is a bigger project. Yeah, it, it just has more value. What happens is, you know, a lot of times contractors, they'll say, well, I have a couple of small projects, or I can bid on this big project that takes me six months. There's a couple of small projects that are two, three months, and there's an opportunity because you have a way, or when some of it, if the contractor sees, oh, there's a. Project here that I can do, as well as it goes on their resume, but future projects, it's saying we're going to get at what we do. If you've done this big project. So I do feel like that there's more, uh, incentive for contractors to be attracted to this project.
On that note, really quick, not me to interrupt. One of the legislative updates that I did not provide is one of the bills that passed. Prohibits cities from acquiring potential bidders to have previous government project experience. Something that was commonly used in almost every project that would generate really qualified local bidders. So I, I think Jeremiah hit the nail on the head. It's that you're going to have a really large pool of qualified, you hope, contractors to do the result of, of that particular legislative change.
Yeah, and, and that having a fair level of detail on plan sheets is also attractive to, to contractors because they feel more confident that they can get the work done. And they feel like, hey, I'm not going to have to send in a bunch of our files, request for information to the engineer to clarify something for the plan sheet because they don't know how to do this, or. I don't know what to do. So that's where some of the level of detail and, and attention that plan sheets get can actually turn around. With these contractors, they just feel like, oh, yeah, we can. We don't, we don't really have. Shouldn't, so that, that usually. Feeling for contractors as well.
And also for our project, um, if all goes planned, we let the bid for a, for a month, take two weeks and evaluate, choose a contractor. Um, we'll be building in September, October. That's the ideal time to be building roads. Because we were, we're past the hot, hot summer, we're in front of the cold freezing weather, and it's just the most excellent time to be building. And that's what, uh, Cody Abney, the chair, his, his objective is to have it by Oktoberfest, so.
Scary thing.
Question from Mr. Davis.
So my question is. So on the plans, on, on my street in front of my house, um, these street trees. Are in the wrong area. They're actually in front of my mailbox, but in reality, they're thirty feet. In a different direction. And I'm curious, so is there somebody sitting there going, oh, yeah, common sense means what this island is that they mean is that one, not. I'm very excited.
We, 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 what we add notes in the plan sheets, um, that contractor needs to verify. I mean, and we'll say general things, you know. Like, hey, just because what you see here, that doesn't take away from you doing edge of pavement, the edge of pavement, because. You know, sometimes I'll be like, well, you didn't show it exactly the way it needed to be. And now our asphalt's coming in on the inside, but it's six inches on both sides of the street. So. Um, there's thing, there's, there's things that we put within the plan sheets that, that tells them that they need to.
Common sense makes sense.
Yeah, and, and also that also comes with the benefit of getting, of going with more experienced contractors, you know, that's something that would be expected of them.
That was just my question. It was like, is there a person, is it the company themselves doing it? Or is there somebody going, I'm overseeing?
But no, we also, we are including Avery's and Associates. It's also anticipating some post-construction services. And we have an inspector that we, that we expect to be going out there. And that inspector working for Avery's. Um, knows our plan, show, plan sheets knows me, um, and they'll be out there making sure that, uh, that the, that the contractor is doing more, that adheres to.
Yeah, they're not going to take down my tree island and then put a hole in front of my mailbox.
Yeah.
Well, that's just how it's going.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
This question, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, okay. All right, but I'm ready.
You'd like to make a motion?
Okay, and will the city council accept and approve the May twenty twenty-three request proposal titled. City of Wood Creek Residential Mill and Overlay Project, introduced and submitted by Avery and Associates. And the purpose of this request, uh, for proposal document is to publicly announce the project. Clearly define the scope of the project and to solicit bids from qualified contractors to perform the work delineated in the contract documents.
Do you share that with the city secretary?
Yes.
Yes. Your nails look lovely, but I don't need them.
There's been so much work that has gone into this, and it is such a pleasure to get it to this stage. And, you know, to think that, that, uh, we don't even have to wait for like the holidays, you know, that, that.
Can't do without a holiday.
My favorite holiday, come on.
Halloween.
I had a question. So if I'm hearing you right, you're not a hundred percent done, and that's to be expected at this stage. So approving and voting today is essentially. You get the green light to finalize it, but finalize it by Friday. We would then see it on Monday, the final products, right? Because. Uh, there's been a lot of back and forth, and this was actually not in our packet because it's massive. And I do understand that maybe there's a, a closer, more edited version here at City Hall now. Uh, and so I just wanted to make sure that anybody who wanted to look at it. Who would be looking at it, um, that, you know, and also with the understanding that if we, what we're hitting tonight, we realize you're going to. Keep working on her and finalize my, like, right?
Yeah, that's right. And, and.
This is the, uh, plan document.
Yeah.
It's up here. So you can come and read it. We didn't have it in the packet because it's. Human. But that's, I mean, it's, this is.
That's the thing is I. That was my question because I was never really geared when to come look at it because I knew that we're still having back and forth. So that's sort of my idea of like. I just want to know when it's a good time to become look at the final business, you know, of what we're.
Just for, for those that, you know, I don't have it, uh, you'll, you'll find a stamp. So, and, and that's what's going. When, when the engineer of record signs and seals the plan sheets, if you don't see a stamp with their, their signature across it. That means it's in a preliminary, so, uh, but what you can expect to see next week are the signed and sealed. They would be, it'd be done.
Great. Well, I trust the more in, intelligent, knowledgeable people that have been working on this. I just want to see the final things.
So, so what you're, this for clarification, once we get the, the, the final document, you want me to give you a call or send an electronic link for you so you can look it over before you submit it out?
No, no. I want to be informed on the final document. I very much trust the people who have been working on it, way better myself.
I just want to share the truth. I'm not supposed to do something to them. Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. And I'm going to do an attempt to, um, read the entire thing, but accept and approve the R and P by Avery so that we can go out and. Finish and test it on and then put it out there. So we can vote.
Councilmember. Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor for Tamara Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer.
Aye, thank you.
What?
You know. Yeah, I'm actually originally from Washington, D.C., uh, from Seattle. I've been here a few years. I was in the military. From ninety-eight, two thousand five. That's how I knew that, that's why I wanted, wanted to come back to Texas. But I always, we always think outside of Texas. We always think about where the Texas can always fly, what it, who to tell us down the bike and. It's been a, it's been a lot of fun for me and my team to participate on this project. So thank you for your hard to put in.
Appreciate it very much. Yeah, thank you.
I just want to mention one more thing, especially with the August, uh, we have, a lot of people went into this whole wrong. Wasn't just ours. Lot of people joined this.
Sure.
Underwriter was. Should change.
You know.
Send over on. You're, you're fine right there, Pat. This is impressed here. Is there? It looks better on that one. It's a smaller.
It's a P E S, not an L, yeah.
Anybody get a copy?
Some extras over there, please.
You ready for me? Okay. Back in twenty twenty one, we submitted our. Grant application to Hayes County's Ozak group. Which was a parks and open space advisory committee to get money from them. Parks and open spaces and Wood Creek is. Uh, but anyway, so we waited uh for about a year and a half and then all of a sudden about six months ago. Uh, we found out that we had received the money. And uh. We basically. Started working in earnest, uh, all of our board members and city staff. Collecting all of these different estimates for the things that we had proposed to Hayes County. And we uh. The problem is, is in a year and a half. Uh, inflation had gone up about twenty percent. So we had to go in and edit some of the things that we were doing. But as we go through this, uh, I think we've retained much the full value of everything we got. Next slide, please. Can you use the right key? Does that do it?
The right key.
Yeah. Okay. And basically this shows locations of the parks. And have have you guys had a chance to look over this?
Yes.
In detail?
Yes, in our package.
Good. Okay. So anyway, the three different parks where they're located. Pretty centrally located for the triangle in Brook Hall. Augusta is where it is because there before. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the nature of the three things. We're looking at the triangle being a gathering place, Creekside Park. Being mainly a playground and Augusta Park. Being something that will serve all ages with different games that all ages can play and a lot of natural play area as well. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a survey of Augusta Park. And the existing bocce ball court existing parking, we're looking at adding. Uh, decomposed granite area in here and leveling it. So we can play ping pong and so someone can go through the ADA access into the bocce ball court that we're going to put in. Uh, we're also looking at getting these honeycomb tunnels. And right now, the what appears to be the best location is over here in here, the picnic tables. It's relatively flat on the top post. And then this would be where the big limb you see in the middle of the triangle and some of the other natural elements would be. Next slide, please. Uh, that's the uh, the bocce ball court cut would be right here. Next slide. Um, where. You've already seen those. Where we were initially looking at a concrete ping pong table, but we discovered this is just as durable. And costs less and the shipping is considerably less. And so we went to that. And then a cornhole game that's concrete. So both of these can be affixed where they're now bulletproof. Next slide, please. And then some of the natural play elements, the different. Logs that we had the indirect benefit of the frees that gave us playground equipment. And uh. We've got a lot of cleaned up loose park stuff from our Earth Day, Work Day over there. And then we have, we're going to have science. Becky Denton, who is one of three master naturalists on our committee. Is kind of coming uh. Getting everyone to come up with the best signage for us. Next slide. Um, at the triangle, we're looking at putting a twenty foot diameter gazebo. Made out of red cedar with a metal roof on a concrete slab. And. If you go to the next slide. This shows where it would be located and this is to scale. Can you go back a slide? But this uh opening here, we're thinking would be much better if it was turned a hundred and eighty degree, not a hundred and eighty degrees. So it was facing the shady area though people could sit in lawn chairs and if they were watching some of the under activity or speaker or something. Okay, next slide, the next slide. Okay, this is the complicated slide here. Um. And hopefully you could kind of understand what all was going on there. Um, we worked very hard to try to fit. The elements in without overcrowding it. This is a plan that was given to us. By the Cunningham Recreation uh vendor. That we're going to for this because we're buying this through a cooperative buying program. So we don't have to get three bids. We have so many different elements in this. Uh, project that we're doing that getting three bids for everything has been a very trying project and we've had. All of our board members groups scrambling around trying to get them. And we've had trouble with some of the people. Wanting to bid because they're not necessarily very big jobs. And so getting the three bids with a three hundred dollar threshold has been very difficult with some of this stuff. But we've got bids on everything, just not three on everything, but we've got enough. Bids to understand that the costing that we've done. On the spreadsheet is very close to. You know, nail on the head. And then we plug in the contingents E P board as well. Um, we're looking at having parking for three to four. Vehicles here. This is approximately twenty two feet deep, which should accommodate a super cab pickup. Um, and uh, this will have uh. Councilwoman Brumman should ask about a fence. We've got a four foot ornamental iron fence. Here. And then right here and right here where it's adjacent to the homeowners that are next to the park. We are looking at putting a six foot. Horizontal privacy fence like we have here by the parking lot. And I've talked to both homeowners and they're good with that. We even got their input said. Do you want to keep the view or do you want privacy? And they they said privacy. So we've gone with that. Um. And then these are swings back here and this is all overlaid on a free survey. So that's all the circles in here and not just decorative.
Yeah. In previous iterations, when it comes to this thing. It was a double bay?
It is still a double bay.
Okay.
Um.
I just found the drawing that.
You know, it's funny. The swings are there, but I don't see the bar. You know, I just threw that in and I didn't like study. There are. In in fact, one of the swings is very cool because it allows a parent to sit on one side of the swing and then a little baby or a toddler just on the other side. They can look at each other as they swim.
That really is cool.
Okay.
Pick that branch in the swing.
Yeah. Okay, this is a closer view of the playscape and uh. Past this surround. When I initially saw this, if you just pass that down. When I initially saw the uh. Rope. Play area over here because this. One of the main features is this big lattice work rope thing. I thought, gee, rope should. But if you look at this stuff, you could get a Sikorsky helicopter pickup City Hall. I mean, it is. Look at, look at all the stainless steel cables. Yeah, look at that. It's. Yeah, so. I was very impressed because I'm waiting for being very anti look to be very close. So anyway, this is a layout of it and it looks like this will be the feature that is kind of closest to the road. And uh. I think we're, we're going to have a couple, one or two picnic tables over here so parents can sit and watch their kids. Visit because the nice thing about a park like this is people say, why don't you? Just let the kids play in the parks in their back in the on the playpits in their backyard. But this brings people and families together. And it it builds community and all of the social interaction, all the stuff you heard about when they were talking about pools earlier. But this, this draws people together. Next slide, please. And this is a very squishy version of uh what the playground is. Uh, we've got an eight foot tall platform, a five foot tall platform. This person is roughly the scale. This is designed for um. Five through twelve year olds. And when I initially showed this, somebody said, that's supposed to be a five year old. And I just said, it's very short. But uh, we do have a slide that goes off the back foot. So uh. Smaller kids can go down that. Next slide. Uh, and here's the double bay swings. And uh, we had a request from a couple of parents to put in one of these spinning whirl things.
I honestly thought they were banned.
I did too. I did too.
But this, everything that Cunningham Recreation sells passes the Consumer Product Safety Commission guidelines. And all of the mechanisms and everything underneath here are completely shielded where you can't. You know, you can't crawl up in there and get all meshed.
Oh, no, except it flings people off or you end up barking, but.
Let's see, can you go back to here? Here it is located here. And so you have a big swing off area around. That is, uh, this is still going to have feet. So you've got another about eight feet all the way around it. It's going to be engineered with fiber, which is basically fancy. Playground mulch that they can land on as they swing on. We hope they will get better judgment than that. I never did.
May I have another question about that, about that one, that slide there? I know the double bay since it's the same company as the playground. You could do the colors that the playground is in. Does the platform from the same companies, Game Time as well?
The platform is from the same company and we can, we're going to go through and adjust all of the colors.
I I love the colors of the playground. So there's.
Yeah, and on the playground, we had some white rails and stuff and we're thinking about maybe going with darker. Darker rails. I wasn't as enthused about the white rails. I thought they kind of. I don't know. This, we're getting into this here. If you guys have input, we can work on it. But you, all of the colors here are discretionary. So we, and we're wanting it to blend in. We don't want it to be purple and orange if people drive by and run into a deer because of the distraction.
And and dark colors get hot.
Yeah.
So with the light, even if it's less aesthetically pleasing is.
Yeah. Or maybe tan or something. I don't know. We're, we're gonna, we haven't noodled it that far, but at least they've got it in the ballpark with colors for it right now. But we haven't specified that yet. Okay, let's see. Next. Uh, this is just talking about our original budget of twenty seven thousand, two hundred sixty seven thousand. Uh, with inflation, we would have been fifty three K short. And so we ended up mainly editing at Augusta Park. The big platform that we were going to have over there because of everything we had, it seemed to be. Kind of the least effective play value. And so we, we thought, well, we can edit that and supplement with some other things to kind of. Try to give the same play value, but not. Remove things that the other two areas that were high value that had to be of a certain caliber. Next slide. This is a summary of our cost. And so I put together a spreadsheet, Google sheet. And uh, we've got a sheet for the Triangle Creekside and Augusta, and these are the totals that came up. The uh, elephant room, of course, is the big playscape. And it just. Um. That's not what it costs, but the various elements there with the fence and everything else we're putting in brings it up to that. Um. But it's fifty five K less. Than what it would have cost if we had not negotiated with them. To um, stick with a kind of a thirty day special they put out. And then they tried to pull it, you know, they say, well, that has expired now. So we're back to. Fifty five thousand more and Cody uh talked to him nicely. Yeah, Cody's good. He can talk. And oh, yeah, he's, he's much more skilled. Next slide, please. So this is the triangle and we've broken down the cost on the gazebo. And we've got bids from, uh, we actually have three bids on the gazebo. And uh. You know, you can see what it costs there. Uh, we're going, what else? Can you go back? Uh, we are going to have electrical in it. Uh, so we will be able to have some lights and decorated at Christmas, have a ceiling fan if somebody's good. Okay. Um. And we're also going to do a slab for the water fountain as part of this as well.
Pat, I don't mean to interrupt, but you keep saying we have to have three bids. We have to have three bids. And I just. Refresh myself and the, the policy actually decides you have to solicit. That many bids. It doesn't mean that you get them. So like when I've had to solicit for the city, I actually solicited ten to fifteen companies. And sometimes I've only gotten two or really two that I could actually use. So it's solicit. Not three hard bids. I obviously three is ideal, right? Because then we have a good array to choose from. But if you're, if you're running up short, but you solicit it, you're, you're good.
Well, that's good. That's better news then. Um. So anyway, but we've worked toward that and on some of them, we've gotten that many bids. Um. Let's see, next slide. And this is the uh. These are the Creekside costs. And uh, got a bid in today for actually for construction fence that we might go with instead of the uh. Orange one. And so it's come in a lot lower than I thought it was. So that's real. Um, and we're working little details like bicycle racks and benches and stuff. And as. We go through all the different puts and takes on this, we're going to try to add back in the bike racks and the benches. That are the purple lines as much as possible. Next slide. And these are the Augusta Park cost. And we're looking at putting tan. Bocce ball, artificial turf in the bocce ball court that is permeable. So water can go through it and it would also allow people to go out there and practice their putting. So it'd be like a little long putting green as well. And uh, you know, things like the ping pong games, the cornhole games. Um, those are things that people from five to ninety five can all play. So it's, it's something for all ages. And I think, oh, let's see, one more slide. This is the important one here. Um, well. Uh. The playscape, if we order it. Takes twelve to twenty weeks to be delivered and installed. So if we act tonight. Then worst case, it will be done by the end of October.
Spectacular.
I also, I, I don't know if y'all dealt with ordering these things before, but we have, and they don't all come at once. And so we're going to need somewhere to store all of these boxes.
Um, what if, what's going to happen is I talked to Todd Miller, kind of, he, he's in San Antonio and his assembly crew is in San Antonio. And he says this thing is going to come in crates that are about eight feet long, five feet wide, six feet tall. And. His guys. Are going to unload it. And if they can't unload it and immediately start assembling it, they will. Either work with the freight carrier to store it at their facility for a couple of weeks. Or they will find a facility to store it, but we're not going to just. Leave it sitting out there.
Well, and you also, you needed like skid loaders and sometimes they'll bring them. But like then they, they come in these giant trucks that it's pretty hard to get in and out of our city. So that, those are all questions I had about the logistics of have y'all planned that far because these things.
You know, um, the guy that's going to be directing this, Todd Miller, has been out on site and has seen the, the location. And so he didn't seem troubled by any of it. And uh. We're. This, the staging of the fence and things like that will have to be done carefully. So we don't build a fence where we can't put a playground, you know, so. And we are going to have removable panels on the ornamental iron fence. So if we need to get into the park and replace uh the wood chips around the playgrounds and stuff. We can take out two eight foot panels and go in with a front end loader or something like that. We can take out two eight foot panels and go in with a front end loader or something like that. And also, we had thought at one point about trying to incorporate some of the adjacent golf course property. But we decided since it was unclear the duration of how long we could use it. And uh other puts and takes, we thought we just decided to keep it right in the city property. And that's my last slide.
I could um just add, except that we'll make a motion um on item number twelve. Um on on taking a couple, and I want to add a personal comment. That um it's it's kind of like the road project, we've had people that have been, you know, just really, really doing a lot of hard work on this. Um and it's like Pat said earlier, you know, you might take a look at some things and change a little bit of this and a little bit of that. Um I I strongly hope that we can get this passed and move forward as is tonight. And just call it phase one if you mind. If you've got other ideas of what's gonna come down the pipe, then you know, we can add that as a phase two. But you know, there's just been so much work gone into this, I I I I hope that we don't. You know, start saying, oh, but what if you do this and what if you do that? I mean, it's just like, you know, talking about colors and things and offerings, um parts. You know, opinion, that that's that's fine, but don't say, we'll hold it. I I think what you're having, you know, eight swings or. And so this, I I hope we don't get into that level of detail with the. With that said, I'd like to make a motion that City Council will accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Board dated June eighth. To go forward with implementing the part of project as outlined in the presentation that's been given tonight. Second by Councilmember Bailey.
Yeah, so uh I have a couple minor points, hopefully, considering the minor, one of them being um. I I've tried to look up the arborist you've selected, and I know this is like a pet project, because I mean. I'm an arborist in my home. I'm not recommending him in any way, but I don't, so people don't think. But um I'm unable to locate their certified status and their website's not working. So I was a little bit concerned about that vendor, because I really want the city to be advocating that we use certified arborists and following that. So I just want to make sure that that's verified and that y'all are doing that and that whenever that work is conducted, that the certified arborist is actually on site. During the duration of the project, um rather than, yeah, we've got a guy we contract with who does bids. And we use their number, but it's another crew that comes up. So I'm just really familiar with the industry, so I'm I'm really recommending that the city uphold their best practice standards on that front because we ask it of residents. So we need to make sure we're doing that, and I don't need you to confirm with me tonight their arborist number or any of that, I'm just saying that. I wasn't able to figure out my own, and their website doesn't work. Um my next point uh is that I'm. Really, really, really interested in the playscape, the creekside park. Getting completely done to its best possible standards without any hiccups or problems. And so I would actually, and I've opened a discussion on this, I would like to amend this. To state that we move forward with that project and get that done. And that we kind of rank these with Augusta being number two, and then the triangle being number three. Okay, it's got a second, so we can proceed with the discussion. The reason being is that number on the playground, that whole project is really, really high, and it's very close. To the total amount, and you guys have done such great work to lock all this stuff down. And that playground, if you look at it, look how many more months it's gonna take, and I don't wanna end up in October and. We've run out of money, things are more expensive, you know, et cetera.
Well, and the longer we wait, and so. It the thing is, is we've got a hard quote putting them on this. I mean, it is a hard quote, and it wasn't the packet, wasn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's a hard quote, and uh we were looking forward to acting on that as soon as council approved it. And then the other items. Um one reason we moved forward this, with this as one thing. Is so we didn't have to keep coming back and trying to kind of knit it together out of pieces. And so we worked very hard, I I can't anticipate with Creekside Park that there is anything. That is got a question mark on the cost.
I I'm not saying you don't report with one thing, I'm just asking that we prioritize the playscape, get that project done. And then move to the the next project.
So we wait till the end of October to do it, to do the others?
Well, you mentioned that it wouldn't take that long to get.
Wait up for twelve weeks to do it?
Just just discussing it and recommending it because my my concern is we proceed with a very expensive gazebo. Fall short on our place game, which is the number one thing people actually want, right? That's what they've actually asked us to do, and then number two for Augusta, you've got a lot of pieces there where if it ends up, we can. Buy a piece of it, I buy a piece, I buy a piece, we can still improve Augusta, right? We can still move forward with portions of that plan to that be phase two, right? And then in theory, the triangle is a great bonus. And we're gonna work towards achieving that, but it's it's the um. It's the least usable item of all of them, you know what I mean? The least activity, like it's got a couple purposes and that's it. I'm not against it at all, I just really wanna make sure we get the playscape and the side.
Yeah, I I really don't want a piece, you know, and I I kind of accept your wisdom, and if you've been involved in this project for all this time, that, you know, you're prepared to afford it and all of it. Uh the triangle is important to me is it's near me, and so I don't wanna uh delay that either, so I'm I don't really wanna piece me like.
That's member Bailey.
Uh also, I was going to say something similar, I don't see that one. Has to take priority, you're not going to use the same contractor on the gazebo as you will for the other. And I also have someone who might be very interested in contributing some benches, additional benches. To the triangle, because we've gone very much at it, so all of these areas have.
The reason I seconded it, the motion was, um there's a couple possible. Situations that will delay the triangle, which is um. So the project grant was granted under this certain category called improvement to existing parks. Unfortunately, the triangle isn't zoned as an existing park, and we've had discussions that there may be some. Questions on who owns it, is it a, is it a? In the road right away, like is it considered part of the road? And so there could be some possible hiccups to getting us to the park that it's zoned before we can. Do the actual building, and there also might be some issues with um possible easements to in it. Um the other thing. And I absolutely appreciate all the hard work that Parks Board has done on this, and you didn't have. The comprehensive survey plan when you put this proposal together. But we've since had it, and. What the citizens asked for in their survey, for what they would like to see in new existing parks, is number one, unity garden. Number two, with a five, or a playground and nothing. And then at the very end, the very bottom, with only three percent, was a gathering place. So what I would like to do is we're gonna have, we have a survey of our citizens, and I would like. Repose like this exact idea, would you like a gazebo at the triangle? I know that's a delay, but I want. Cause I have one set of information where I feel uncomfortable spending forty thousand dollars on when it's last on the list of things.
When we presented this to Hayes County, they knew that it was not a park, we never presented it as anything but right away.
Again, so what I was saying was, I I want to be placing and I am on the, on the next citizen survey, which will go out there soon. Um asking the guys specific question. Um and that's why I support this idea of moving forward with the playground next.
Do you have two overlapping motions?
No, I wa, I didn't make it, I was discussing.
There's, there's an amendment on.
And this is not, right, the amendments.
With all the time that's been spent dealing with this, it's been clear that we've always been talking about these three things, and we've always talked about them as the. A project, not three projects. And that's the way it's been worked on in good faith by um by this board this entire time. And with the time that they spent putting it together, they've understood things like time constraints. Um uh how the the limitations, when we would like to get this done. All of those things have been considered already, and to this point, if we were to go and backpedal. Um I think it would also uh show a lack of faith in this board in what they've done for the last six to eight months.
I'll echo that, I mean, we can focus with this thing to death and and never, maybe ever get anything done. I think you guys got a complete passion here, I think it's well thought out and. I think we're gonna do it, all of it, and I think we're gonna get tonight.
This is my second time to speak directly under the motions, and I'll leave it at this, because I understand where I'm ready to move on. Um I feel like I was misunderstood, because I'm not asking we piecemeal, and I'm not asking that it. Be backpedaled or um viewed as three projects. I'm asking that we place and complete the playscape. With and make sure we're done with that park before we proceed to starting. Another part simply because it is the number one thing people have actually asked for. And I I would like us to hold off on the gazebo until we have fully accomplished Creekside Park. And I realize some might view that as a delay. Personally, I don't understand the rush of it, right? We use that word a lot. And I do appreciate that Councilmember Grumgar is pointed out that right now in regards to citizen surveys, which people have really talked about valuing recently. We don't actually have a lot of support for that feature. I'm not against the feature, I respect the work that you've done. I'm not at all trying to actually contradict it, I'm just asking that instead of this mixed timeline, we approach. Phases of the project, and if it gets voted down, it gets voted down, but that's. That would be my preference based on what the parents of Wood Creek really, really want and what they told me they want, and what our surveys say.
Does anybody have anything new to add? I like, let's vote on the second motion. Vote on the original, what, only ritual motion or that passing, the second motion is moved.
That I moved to amend, to be honest.
Yeah, that's not an amendment, that's not an amendment, are you accepting the amendment? That's a different motion.
Usually we vote backwards on if you make an amendment.
Yeah, this is.
To the motion.
Well, what what they're saying is that Bob's not accepting the amendment, but he's not, you know.
I seconded her amendment.
Yeah, but but it's his motion, right? We have a motion and a second, right? And then we had a second motion.
No, a motion to amend.
And so accepting it.
I I didn't realize that that you could not accept one, we've always voted on them, and they get voted down, and we proceed up the tier.
So we vote on.
I'm 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 willing to vote on the amendment and then cover the reversal. Unless it's going to put us. I I again, I don't consider this an amendment, it wasn't accepted as one, it's proposing to completely redo the the order. It may be what happens, but you know, Bob's motion is on the table as it, so i- if if the protocol is to take the second first. We have.
We have. When when he's been accepted as an amendment, but whatever, you know.
Well, I mean, it generally is not that in question. Okay, we're gonna vote on this now, we'll vote on the, we'll vote on the amendment to. Paint the scheduling for the playscape in first and then come back to the other time, so that's the vote.
Mayor Brett Foley. Councilmember Linae Bailey. Councilmember Chris Grumgar. Councilmember Bob Hambrich. Councilmember Deborah Heinz, yes.
All right, there's three nos, two ayes, motion, or the amendment failed, the motion fails, the original motion.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz. Mayor Brett Foley. Councilmember Linae Bailey, aye. Councilmember Chris Grumgar. Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
All right, thank you very much. I'm so sorry that it's. That it late explained, but. Uh I don't remember, ten is to consider and possibly take action. Approving the form of preliminary, take the link with the Wood Creek's Texas General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty three overriding distribution. Publication of such preliminary application and other matters related to the issuance of the bonds. By the city, we have uh, we have represented by the line council and. Uh I'll hear, so um entertaining motion.
Okay, I am moved that this city council adopt a resolution approving the form. The preliminary official statement linked to St. Wood Creek Texans General Obligation Bonds. Series twenty twenty three, authorizing distribution and publication of such preliminary. Official statement and other matters related to the issuance of the bond, which is before the council.
I take that. Second to uh council member Hambrich and um.
Do you like a, yeah, brief overview? Uh mayor, council members, Brad Ang, Swiss People Public Finance, serves the city's municipal advisor. Uh and help you prepare for the bond issuances, I'm joined uh by your bond counsel from Oregon.
Sorry, apologize.
Bond counsel from Oregon is with me, uh to help talk through some of the legal points and provide an overview of the preliminary official statement as well. We've heard maybe the the document, did it make it to your packets, there's the the letter, right?
It's just the resolution, none of this has been, and we didn't receive it, so I've asked them to kind of give us.
Yeah, apologies, we've been uh um putting together this document, writing some data points up uh. Up even today, so I think it came out Monday after your uh packets maybe were posted, so I apologize for that. Um this is a bit of a um, they're built in suspenders, um we wanted to. Uh come back to you all and give you another chance to um ask questions, learn about this process. Um technically, the only requirement um is that you all um are able to review the final terms and structure. Uh next month, when we go to sell your bonds, um on July twelfth, we'll be back here. Uh that evening after, after selling the bonds, and you have the chance at that point to uh review the final term structure, et cetera. Um we do have an item, we're gonna point out some highlights here with this, just just quickly, I I mentioned. Uh the date of the bond sale, um next items that are coming up, um this coming week. Uh I'm sorry, next week, we'll be talking to Moody's Rating Agency, uh that will be with your staff. Uh and and ourselves from uh from Stiefel, we'll be presenting uh the structure of the bonds that we're planning sales. Some of the financial information of the city, um and then they need a week, two weeks to provide us that credit rating. Um in return, that credit rating will be added to the the offering document. Um and then this offering document is what's used to uh market your bonds, to talk to investors. Uh to gain uh their favor as we, as we enter that uh bond sale date. Uh hopefully gain their interest and um uh and get them um excited about investing in the city of Wood Creek. And your road projects coming up, so uh so next week, Moody's. Um uh the week, the first week of July, we will be. Um uh hosting this document, this offering document. um uh hosting this document, this offering document to the marketplace. Um, that's when the official kind of marketing period begins. It's about a week long process. We work with a uh bond underwriter to do that. Uh so I represent you all. Um, a bond underwriter um will come in and talk directly to the investors so that we have, you know, arms length transactions and uh separation of duties and uh requirements, the um uh regulatory requirements on that one. Um, so and then uh a week later on July twelfth, the morning of your next meeting, we'll go um and offer your bonds to the investors for about a two hour period. Um, we open up the bidding process. Uh, the investors are are making offers for different pieces of your bonds. Some might want the uh two year maturity on the front end. Some might like, you know, a twenty year maturity later on. There's different interest rates at each point and they have, you know, a uh mutual fund. They want a long uh uh maturity, whereas maybe a money market fund wants a shorter one. Um, and so after that order period is up, we'll uh combine all those offers and interest rates. Uh you'll end up with one blended uh true interest cost and cost of capital that uh you all will be able to review um at 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 next month's uh meeting. So then we'll have a summary of all those different investors and how that that order period went. So tonight, we'd like to um um talk about a few of the high points um of this offering document. I'm gonna have Ms. Julie Houston with your, at the Oracle firm, uh go through that. She serves as your bond counsel.
Or Justin? So I just emailed you the latest draft. I don't know if you wanna pull it up. I don't know the best way. And what I handed out um earlier is really not worth it. It was all just a copy. It was to show you.
Oh, just to me. So we can kind of, um hopefully Suzanne can send it to you electronically and then we can kind of page through it and I can point out, they won't be able to see it on the screen now.
Okay.
Send it to me and I'll present it. Send it to me. Well, in the, it's looking like this flyer.
Fine, okay.
Well, I was just gonna ask if there was any questions while you open that up, but I'll let um Ms. Houston go ahead and start to discuss the document.
Well, he's putting that uh this document, as Brad pointed out, is what will be actually given to the potential investors to learn about your project, what you're financing, how it's secured, um a little bit about the city. Um, you know, part of the information in here won't be able to be completed until after your audit is uh approved later. So that information will also get rolled in here as well. And so uh what you will be looking at tonight is as a graph of this document, keep you in the process um every step of the way, which started out a while ago with your bond election, right? So now we're uh come to the point where we're preparing the material to go to the investors. And so what is up there is the that's getting to the investors. It's like I said, it's not complete yet because there's still financial information that we're gathering, some of which will be in your audit tonight. But it always starts out with a cover page and the cover page is a summary of 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 what what's going on. They've got your payment terms, your interest payment date, which are February fifteenth and August fifteenth. Um, we've got in here that it is book entry system, which will be a little different. Uh, last time we did a private placement, this time, this will be a public offering and it will go through uh electronically the depository trust corporation. So everything will be electronically uh kept. Bondholders will, um you'll have a paying agent, just like you had before, where when you have to pay your principal and your interest payment, they were sent to the paying agent. Well, now that'll be an additional step. The paying agent will send that to DTC. DTC will send that money on to the investors that bought the bonds. So um that's a little different twist than what you had the last time. And that's when you see DTC on the cover page here, that's who that's referring to, that they're going to be electronically holding the bonds. Um, we've got your authority for issuance on the front page here, which was your election and chapter thirteen thirty-one of of Texas Government Code. And these bonds, as they were voted, were payable from your abhor. Um, if you go down a little bit further on that cover page and you look at purpose, uh that language would probably look familiar to you. Uh, the first item there actually came straight from your composition. Can you zoom in? If we're gonna do it on the screen, I need it like fifty percent closer to even be able to reference what she's talking about. Sorry.
Don't you mean it? You're gonna email the council.
Okay. Well, I'm just gonna keep these emailing all that. What you do have in your hands, you at least have the cover page, so.
We probably not belong to that.
Yeah, that was, that was all that will make sense of the front page.
Okay. Yeah.
Hope y'all have any emails.
Sorry to interrupt. No, no, that's true. Uh, we apologize for the miscommunication there on that. So again, we had just talked about the purpose language there on the cover page that is your valid language and then it all comes with being cost efficient. We have placeholder been here um in the event that insurance is is um acquired for these bonds that it costs effective to do that. And so you'll see those insurance provisions and they're bracketed. And then um you'll see the name of uh there at the bottom. And uh that was through a process with your city manager who put out a request for some proposals for the potential un- underwriters for the project. And now we all have copies on your computer.
Yes.
Here, but he's notification three to the sun. So the inside cover is next page and of the booklet and that's got your um proposed um maturity and debt service schedule. Um, that could be adjusted slightly with pricing, but that'll be pretty close. Uh, and then underneath that, there is a summary information again about insurance and that there will also be um optional redemption periods in there. That's a generally period of time, seven to ten years out, that will be part of pricing where you can come back in if it's cost effective and you can refund or refinance this debt.
One quick comment on that maturity schedule. You'll see these numbers. It looks like they're growing from year to year because this is just the principal portion. When you add in the interest cost, you get to a um a level that service payment from year to year.
Um, and then if you want to go to the table of contents, the next page is a page of a lot of disclaimer for the investor really need to read this document, not rely just on the cover. So um if you go to the table of contents, that's a good overview of what contains in this offering booklet. And you'll see where some of this information gets repeated. Uh but again, the cover page is just a summary. And so um the investor is is cautioned to read the whole document and the table of contents is all here. Um, everything that's contained in this booklet. So and then if you go on, then we start giving some uh summary information regarding the city. Uh, the city officials, uh the appointed officials, your consultants. Um, where additional information is needed, they can contact your city manager or your financial advisor Brad. And then after that is um some selected financial information um for the investor to stay looked at as a snapshot. There'll be more of this uh as a tendencies to the actual offering document.
And then you'll see a couple of holes in there. We're we're collecting data points filled um as your audit is approved this evening, that'll add to it as well. So uh these will be filled in.
And then um after that, we have the official statement summary, which basically is again, kind of a summary, it would just expanded slightly from what was on your cover page. Little bit about the city, um the bond payment base, purpose of the bond, authority. Again, here's your optional redemption of here. You've got placeholders for uh the rain that Brad just uh spoke about. And then also if there's going to be insurance. Uh again, there's a little provision in here letting investors know this is book entry through DTC. They'll all be held electronically. Um, and then.
It is what the ten year call, right?
Or that that's been standard here lately. Um, we'll try and get a little shorter if if the market allows, but it'll be a ten year at the most.
Okay, and then the next section, continuing disclosure, uh there'll be a whole section on the undertaking. It'll also appear in the bond ordinance that will come back with from the price. Um, and that is because you're going into the open market. So we'll touch base on this again in a little bit more detail. But if you go into the market, um the uh SEC and the municipal security rule making board uh require you to make certain updates to this document, file your audit every year uh on an electronic system that can be accessed by any current bondholder, any future bondholder. So it's a little bit, if you have corporate bonds, there's edger. And when you have municipal bonds, you have comma. And so it's a it's a clearinghouse for information where you're gonna have to keep updating it every year. But we'll work with you on those tables that need to be updated. Okay, but more more to come on that. And then these are going to be offered tax uh exempt and our firm will give that opinion. Uh and that's just letting the investor know. Um, this is often advised that the investors um could be banks. Uh, these are going to be qualified tax exempt obligations like your tax notes. Uh, you will be issuing ten million or less this year. So that makes this debt eligible for face to buy as well as other financial. Um, and then just a little bit information, you've never defaulted, who the opinions will be given by and the delivery date is uh protected to the audit curve. Okay, so everything so far been summaries. Now we're gonna get into the actual booklet. Um, we have a little bit of an introduction there again, uh a little more robust description of the city. A little bit about how you're you were formed as a type A city or um you were established and then you became a type A city. Uh, just to let the investor know, this city's been around for a while. You know, even though this is your first time to come to the market, um you were uh it's established as a town in nineteen eighty-four. So that's good to meet with the best. The next section is the bond and these are all summaries like them out of the ordinance that we will come back with when the bonds price. The bond ordinance is your contract with the bondholder. And so this just lets the investor know ahead of time what some of these provisions will be that you'll be approving when the bonds are approved. So we've, again, we've got a description of the bonds, your authority for issuance. What's the security? That's very important to the investor. Uh, when we meet again next month, you will, and if you um if the pricing is all acceptable, you will actual levy an assessment that will be um part or you'll or you'll levy a tax that will become part of your tax when you set that going into the end of this fiscal year, you're going into next fiscal year. Um. Oh, yeah. You said, um, sorry, I just want you to back up like two sentences. Sure. The the idea about the tax levy, what was that important for? You were referencing something in the document. Oh, there's a section here again on security and sort of payment. And I just wanted to make all of you aware that you will actually be levying this tax
Yeah.
to pay this these debt at your next meeting and that will get ruled into your upcoming budget and tax rate. Um, again, the the provisions for the uh optional redemption, uh there's a little provision here on mandatory sinking fund. Sometimes a few of those uh maturity years are grouped together. Uh, investors might succeed at where you may have a bond where those amounts that you saw on that uh inside cover page will become due, but you'll you're holding a bond and you don't know what'll become due the first, second, or third year in a term bond. So it's just a little different structure um that sometimes when the bonds are priced, it'll come in where some of those maturity years will get um grouped together, but you'll still have your interest payment, but they're just called mandatory sinking fund redemption.
If I if I may add on to that, so on the inside the cover, there was the schedule of payments on an annual basis. Some investors, a lot of investors that buy um uni-bonds want a larger size. And so um, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand may not interest them, but if we group them together like five years at a time and get up, you know, closer to a a million, um it can it can uh provide more demand with bonds. Um, and so even though those are grouped together as one bond, you, the city is still gonna make annual payments that gets set aside to ultimately pay off uh those investors. So same annual payments, but we're we're grouping it together so that we can get uh investor interest at a larger size.
Okay. Questions so far?
No, really intense. I'm having to pay attention to your words.
Uh, and then there's provisions in here if and you're going through this process right now with the tax note that you're you're um paying off. There's provisions that would be feeding your outstanding debt. So uh that would involve, you know, sending out your notice of redemption. And then if you turn to the next page, there are kind of a summary of your, the fees and provisions will also be in your bond ordinance uh that you'll look at next month. Next you've got provisions on how you can amend that ordinance, what that takes. Um, next is your book entry system that these are the provisions that DTC gives us put in any bond order uh where it's going to be registered through DTC. So these all come from DTC and that they'll be in your bond ordinance as well. Um.
Depository trust company.
Yeah, yeah, that's that electronic. Now, one of the, since you you don't currently have an account with them, one of the documents that will get approved uh when the bonds are approved is your um depository trust letter with them. Uh, and so we will we'll bring that with. Once you get it set up, you don't have to sign that letter either time. It's a blanket letter that will cover all of your outstanding debt. But that's another, because this is publicly offered, that's another new document that will. And then um hey, uh paying agent registrar, um that is the in your last tax notes, the purchaser also acted as the paying agent registrar. Um, that you can you can do it that way here because these are publicly offered. You will select a bank as your paying agent registrar and that will all uh get rolled into that approval process next month. Uh, and then just some additional provisions on, you know, uh transferring, exchanging and registering the bond.
That's for the investor, how they have to handle it on their side.
Uh, we've got a provision in your record day. Whoever holds the bond on the record day is who will get the payment sent to them. And that's usually fifteen days prior to your payment day. And then uh we've got a section here on remedies. Uh, the city is a governmental entity. Uh, the remedy, the primary remedy for the bondholder is mandated or specific performance. Like you promised to pay, now we're saying you have to pay because you promised to pay. So that that is the bond holder. Um, on the next page here, you see the sources and uses. Again, this will be blank because the the bond hasn't been issued yet, but this will all get filled in when the bonds are issued. Um, after that, we have a few placeholders for bond insurance. Um, these provisions will come straight from the bond insurer. They have their required provisions to put in here. They'll also probably want um their name and their logo on the cover page as well. And so you might see those changes to next go round. Um, we have some placeholders in here for typical bond insurance, uh general risk factors. Again, they will come from your bond insurer, but we've put examples here for you to look at. Okay, the next section, tax information. Since this debt is going to be repaid with your alborum tax. We put a section in here for the investors so that they understand how property tax works in Texas. So we kind of go through here. We kind of go through here how, you know, property is valued, how you can have home set exemptions. A local option home set exemption. They kind of go through everything that's allowed as an exemption. Or can be taxed under Texas law. And but then we also have a provision in here on what the city actually. So.
So my understanding is ultimately as long as we keep our debt service rate. And we don't, I mean, we can't really touch that, right? So we're not really out really ever at risk of violating a lot of this stuff unless there was like a huge market pain. And our properties all be valued simultaneously. I mean, we're. My understanding is we're pretty solid in being able to pay this back. And so this tax information and the idea that, you know, how it's collected and some of this. I mean. It's not, we're not like at risk of not paying.
No, and you're, and even if values go down, you're required to increase your tax rate to produce enough revenue to pay your debt service.
Yeah, because that was almost even just like calculated for us when we got this stuff from the county. And so I was just like, okay, then you, you adjust your M and O to deal with your city business. But our debt service, all of this is kind of mechanical after, you know, in the next couple of weeks, there's not a whole lot. That we're actively doing anymore is what it sounds like, correct?
Yeah, once you set your repayment schedule, your debt service schedule that is locked in. And so you, you know, you all instead of is going to be. Required to calculate the appropriate tax rate to bring it in. In, in turn with your securitization office. But yeah, once you sell these, it is somewhat of a standard process from there on out.
And even like the required reporting, I heard you earlier that essentially you're going to be holding our hand. And I understand we have a pretty. You know, intelligent, experienced financial advisor as a city manager. So I just want to kind of. There's a lot of really heavy language happening right here. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding that like. You know, the next couple of weeks are really crucial for council action and council understanding what's going on. And then after that, it's kind of like on autopilot, right?
That's correct. After we get past the July twelfth sale day. It will be said. The, the interest rate will be locked in, the form of payment. And newly in her team will take that transcript and those documents to the attorney general to get their blessing. And once that happens, you're able to close. And again, it's all those, those terms that got locked in at next council meeting. Start to be implemented and over the coming months and years. At the appropriate tax rate. Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. There's a lot of tax up here. I'm like, yeah, it just doesn't like, you know.
We're just trying to let the investor know how, at the time this debt is issued, how the tax system works in Texas. We even have a little blurb in here about the legislative session and. You know, potentially, you know, that's still, we've got the special sections, so there could be changes to this. But this document just speaks to the date it's published.
Yeah.
And really, you know, maybe we. Certainly want to cover everything if you want to keep going through it in detail, but a lot of the cities' information and financial data. Begins with the first appendix, the appendix A. And that's where you all, the manager have a duty to. Make sure that you have accurate information that we're presenting to the investors so that. And forgive me if you had something. Cover, going to be continuing disclosure. Let's do that because that is another one of y'all's ongoing.
And that's kind of what. You were kind of referring to, it'll be, there'll be procedures put in place to make sure that this will comprise. The continuing disclosure of information. Is that you will, you were providing your audit to the bank who bought your tax note before. But now you'll have to annually provide your audit. And then you'll also have to provide notice of certain special events. So if, if your, if your. Debt is rated and that's what we're thinking to get a bond rating, if there's any change in the rating, you will have to provide notice. To Emma that there has been a ready increase, decrease. If you've got a late payment, there's like sixteen events, a lot of which don't necessarily apply through an alborum tax base, but. The rating would be one if you're delinquent on any payments would be another. Those types of notices will also help to be given. But you have a good team here. You've got, you know, us, you've got your city manager. Your financial advisor. And so we kind of watch these things too and can get the special events published.
Your current staff is very well versed. There was ever a change, you would want to make sure this is something that was addressed. Either through myself as your financial advisor, anybody you work with in the future. It's an important part to keep track of.
Yeah, we don't want any of those.
Yeah, why don't we jump to, it starts after page twenty-six.
In our document, it's on thirty-six.
Okay, exactly, right?
I mean, thirty-six on the Word document.
It's the largest number.
And then I'll start, and it's able to start back over at each one. So go page twenty-six and then the next.
Oh, I'm here. I just was kind of checking on my friend.
So these are pretty standard. Financial tables and data that investors are, are used to seeing for cities, not just in Texas, but around the country. And, and so we need to present this to them as well. It helps them understand. The composition of, of the city, starting with table one, valuation of the property. Within the city limits and then any exemptions that may apply. Second, table two shows a similar breakout. It gets a little bit of historical data points though, so that. The investors can see the trends in your taxable values here within the district. It's broken down by, you know, residential versus commercial. It's, it's, we're well aware, you know, it's a heavy residential type community. It's still blank. No, we want to get, you know, we wanted to give you the form. We want you to know what's going to go in here. We do it about three weeks before we need to have this final and. Post it. So we, we are, it is a work in progress.
You gotta be questioning my eyes right? Like, is this really light?
Table three, additional. Assess valuation figures, looking at it on a per capita basis. And then getting down into table four. The actual tax rate that y'all apply. And then how well you're able to, to collect those taxes, you know, what percentage of the taxes are historically collected. Which are going to be very high here. You know, Hays County does a good job with their collections. Large, ten largest taxpayers, investors are trying to identify if there's a concentration, if one. Single taxpayer were to leave the community is going to affect the city's ability to repay. Page six, table, or sorry, table six. This will be the debt service requirements. So typically we show your existing debt service payments in the table there. And then we add on your new debt service payments. Because you're clearing out and paying off your current payments. It's only, we'll still have the same table. But really it's just going to list out the anticipated payments of this upcoming bond sale. So that will be added here as we get a little bit closer and. Have some, some better estimates on interest rates.
How are interest rates right now? I know the Fed's met today and they didn't write a little bit.
Yeah, the Fed, the Fed funds rate is the short term rate. That's what, you know, their lending rates to banks on overnight basis. That really affects kind of the short term. We tend to see. Some follow through that does start to get into the, you know, ten year, twenty year, thirty year type rates because. Investors are looking at, at both sides of that equation. They've been stabilizing a bit. They continue just to tick up a little bit each week. We do want to go ahead and get out, but get out of the market that is in lock ins and pricing. You know, I was able to lift the guard, she the comments this past week. On her insights to it, you know, even though she thinks the short term interest rates are going to stay elevated where they are all the way through twenty twenty-four. But we actually may start to see the, the longer term rates maybe come down a little bit from where they are. You already seen that a little bit in the mortgage market and some other places, but we intend to stay at its level or slightly. Higher maybe in the short term over the next few months and then at these approximate levels over the next year and a half. Tables seven. Overlapping debt. Not only do investors want to look at. The debt that the city is going to take on. They want to know what are the taxpayers within the city limits have to pay for outside, you know, for other type of taxing entities. And so they call that overlapping debt. So you have the county, you know, that we pay, you have. The school districts are the biggest burden here in Texas. And so we, we let that out so that it can evaluate in that manner as well. Table eight, interest and sinking fund. That's your, your debt service fund. What kind of cash do you have in there? To start the year, what payments did you have this year? And then what's anticipated to be remaining at the end? Again, they're just trying to see what cash, what money might be available for your payments. Are you doing a good job of. Bringing in the appropriate amounts to pay your, your debt service. Table nine, this is the summary of your financial statements over the past five years. Revenues and expenditures. They're trying to see if you're. Good stewards of your, of your monies, if you have some fund balances. And again, just to look at your, kind of your profit and loss, if you will. But for governmental accounting. Table ten, municipal sales tax history. Not a big component or part of you all's budget, but you do have some coming in. That is listed there below on the table ten. Table eleven. Again, folks want to know if you have, in addition to the bonds you're going to sell, do you have additional bonds that are authorized but then issued? You all are going to issue it all at once. So they won't, you know, be concerned that you're going to dilute their payments in the future. Table twelve, they'll look at your, you know, how your cash and investments are. Currently the market value, how it's allocated in the portfolio. And then again, just some placeholders here for additional appendices that will come at a later date. Including bond counsel opinions, bond insurance. We'll update some of these headings that we'll also. With the approval of your audit, look to put some of that information there as well. Sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Take over the document, but any final items you wanted to point out?
I think so. I mean, we're happy to take questions or. I know this is a lot of information about the process.
I don't have any questions. I just want to review the thing you kind of started with. That seems like the major key film point for anybody, specifically residents, right? Is that. Approving this resolution in this document this evening, knowing obviously there's missing pieces that will be edited over the time period in the next couple of weeks, right? Your next step is to get the credit rating. For the city. Then you said you were going to post it to marketplace. Is that sort of just like an advertiser of like, hey, we're about to. Ask for money, you know, investors. So that's what that means?
It does.
Okay. And you said you're going to try to do that next week? Are you for sure do it next week or?
No, the, the credit rating will be next week. We post the offering document that we're scheduled to currently on July fifth.
Okay.
So one week beforehand, we may do it a couple of days earlier. Smaller bond issuances are much more difficult to tell right now. There's, there's not as much liquidity. So we may work with your underwriter to post that a few days earlier, give them some extra time to market to investors. So there's some flexibility there.
You've selected the underwriter already. It's that, it kind of implies that.
Yeah, it's a company called Baird.
Okay. So that, and they essentially kind of communicate with the investors is what she said. They're like, it's almost like a negotiator, like a middleman, like a realtor in a real estate deal.
That's right.
Okay. And then on July twelfth, there's a two hour bid period where we're actually open to accepting. Like actual bids, right? And then that closes. And I assume you're going to prepare some sort of packet for us of like. This is what we have to offer. What I wasn't clear there. Were the V choices in that or is essentially this is what, this is it? This is the A.
That's right. So that plan of finance that we talked about last month and we. Came to you purposely with that.
Yeah.
We can get that sign off. So that structure is developed. The interest rate is really the only thing that's going to change at this point on pricing day. If, if there was some big market volatility. And it looked like you were, you know, instead of getting a, you know, four and a half or five percent interest rate, it was, it was going to be eight percent. We'd go to Mr. Rule and, and most likely recommend that you pull off and you pull your deal.
Okay, that, that was like one of the questions I had of like, you know, obviously we, we want to keep moving forward and taking steps forward, but you know, like say a war breaks out somewhere and things like. Oh, you know, so we do have the ability to press pause and that doesn't really jeopardize anything but the timeline or?
That's right. It would jeopardize your timeline. It's, it's okay to hit the pause button before. We go out and try and sell bonds. If we come to you. With what's a, a good market rate and we can prove that up and show you this is, you know, we can show you comparable sales and show you the market rate. It is important, once we go out and do that, that you all are prepared to accept a, a, a market rate.
So that would be the thing you bring back to us, that, that package. We realize we got to set our interest rates to deal with this. We say accept. And then at that moment, essentially. What, then they are sold, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. At that point, once you accept and sign. We let the underwriter know.
There'll be a bond agreement that will get signed.
And that underwriter then starts to picket their bond sales and that starts the clock so that. The investors that hold your bonds, after a certain short period of time, they can begin to trade bonds on the secondary market. So. Once, you know, once you accept, it's, it's out there.
And then that obvious third would be a hard deadline for the fund or is that a soft deadline?
For the funding? Yeah. Once we, again, once we sell those bonds, that is established. It'll be hard, hard day.
The last component I'm not really clear of and like the, the timeline of this mechanics is essentially. We, you know, you, you brought this package. We say, yes, we're ready, sale. We've established the interest rate we need to set. How does that plug into our, the actual timeline of like our budget? Process. I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so you'll lock in, you'll know what every single payment is going to be over the next twenty, twenty-five years after that sale date. That debt service schedule is what we call it. Your, your future payment is locked in. So your, your city manager, as they go through the budgeting process, it's going to know what it is every single year and it has to get. Backed into your tax rate declaration. Backed into your tax rate declaration.
Great. Thank you for understanding all my not expert terminology there.
What we're hoping to do is dovetail this bond with our letting of the contract. What if we don't get an acceptable contract? We don't have our instructor. Is there a time then we can pass? How does the distribution of money work?
So at the closing day, which we have scheduled for early August, thirty. That money will. It'll, it'll be funded and given to an account of the cities. That money. Can be set in an account till you.
Oh, we'll, we'll get that money in the three point four minus the fees because what they'll do is they'll get the. The, the money from the bond, the paying agent will pay for it, they'll pay bear, they'll pay. Financial advisor, they'll pay the janitor and the dishwasher, okay? And then they'll send us the remaining funds. That money will go into the pooled account into a segregated accounts. This is one reason why now we, we need to go to fund balance accounting where we split the actual funds up. Cause it will be separated and then as we go through the process of paying for the roads. We're in different sections. We will withdraw that money from the account that's over at the, at the pool. And we'll take that out and then we'll pay the contractors with that money. So it will be set off to the side, getting interest.
Construction draws.
Do what?
But there will be a series of.
So that's very important for us to get about five percent interest for four and a half right now.
Okay.
And then we'll, yeah, we'll draw it on a monthly basis or however, you know, if. I mean, it's hopefully we do that, but because we also pay the engineering firm and, you know, there's a bunch of people to get.
And we do have one thing to add on that because you had talked about what if you don't, in your mind, get a timely contract. There are spend down requirements under both the and federal law. Where you have to be prepared to spend a certain amount in the first six months. And then you have to be able to spend eighty-five percent of it within a three year period. So you, you do have. Yeah, so if you have to spend out for bids again, but we can go through that with you as well.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have our. You just not have to worry about it. You know, you do.
Mention jokes.
Well, on your first night, I remember that I was like, oh, and like, what if you don't, if we don't roll this out, we've got, we do have a timeline.
Yeah, no, we won't. Those funds will be spent quite quickly. And, and even with arbitrageurs.
When you talk about arbitrations, you can't issue. Bonds and then take that money and put it in account and draw interest on it greater than the interest rate on the bond. You have to have. The current intent when you issue the bonds to spend it.
And make money off the money you borrow.
Somebody in the past, they were issuing bonds, putting it in there, getting more money and so they were. Getting money, you know, the, they were keeping the spread.
That's why the, you know, they allow you to borrow at tax exempt rates. It's only for capital projects. Can only build what they can borrow tax exempt to.
Of that amount drawing is, is too significant of interest. To put us upside down in this situation you're talking about because.
Even if you exceeded it, there's, there's ways to.
If you, all you do is you pay the government the excess amount. So let's say that we issued the bonds for four and a half and we get five percent. That extra interest, that fifty basis points that we get, we would just that percentage of the government. But you also have to, and you'd get a yearly calculation. You go up to a CPA firm or, or somebody that's arbitraging. We won't have to worry about that, I guarantee.
Well, I'm not, you're.
We're, we're going to, we're going to fix the road and do them all, but it's going to be done by.
So. Are we? I mean, we do have much, we got questions answered, but it's. And we still have other items. So we have a motion on the board to adopt the resolution. And if there's no further discussion, take a vote.
Councilman Yuliana Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grant?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hine?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Rockley?
All right, beautiful. So is that a conclusion there for me to sign right now or? Right, because sometimes y'all come in, it's like, and then you think I'm screwing up.
Now that we need to pay off those tax notes by a certain date. I wanted to get that.
Oh, yeah, we are paying off our, our, uh, twenty eighth of this month.
Next meeting, we will want signatures pretty immediately.
Yeah, because we will have to file the transcript with the AG's office. That's why there's a little bit of a gap between pricing and closing. Because we have to get all the original signatures, put it in a transcript, ship it off to the AG's office, they review it. And they actually approve the bond as well. So we have an acting AG right now? All right, I follow the news, but not that closely, obviously.
Well, next item on the agenda and something that. Bond, uh, counsel and financial advisors that they needed is information from APID, so.
Exactly.
There we go. Righters.
Oh, mine. All right, let me pass them out. Good night. If you want to talk more bonds. Any questions come up, just send.
Yeah. Let's do, let's do.
Ten minutes?
Five minutes? Five minutes? No more than five minutes.
Have a good trip.
Thanks, y'all. Good luck. Good meet tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wouldn't seem that twice in my very.
When I was in Lubbock, uh, we had bonds. Eight years old. And still have money in them. We never paid because we never made a lot. Oh, really? Yeah, that's back when. Yeah, this is back when the interest rates were near nothing, but we still did arbitrage every year. It's because we had so much.
Held?
Yeah. We had about. Half a million.
This was pretty recent. I want to say it was like eighteen, no.
No, we had five hundred million. Five hundred million in, yeah. C I B. Yeah.
Yeah, the bond documents, like they're super vague.
We use it for bonding.
Can we see one where they still have money in the bank? Yeah, but, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, they still had money on them. It wasn't refunded or anything.
Yeah.
I've never seen that. Is that?
Oh, did you go to the long table? Yeah.
But that was the thing that's like.
Yeah, I got family up there.
Yeah, the, the pool would come back. Something to do with that.
Oh, yeah, uh, Texas classic daily.
Yeah, I have one. Like a lot of our minds are moving their money out of X.
Builder.
Yeah.
Chief of the National Officer for one time.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting to see too, because look at, it's like Santa Monica. Vision because everyone's like right on top of each other's new yards and.
Yeah. I lived, um, also there should be crying out. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I've got everything fast.
The first time it was.
Any surprises?
Yeah.
On the other? Was that, any surprises?
On the weekend.
No, we had a.
Wow, you're talking about.
We asked bookkeepers, we were, oh, I forgot to approve. They were a great friend of mine. We have that recorded in the right degree. But it's still nothing effective. It came in.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw it before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks fine.
Clean opinion, uh, pretty healthy fund balance. Don't tell them what they were saying. I think investors are going to like seeing that. Cause even if. Like what they didn't say was even the debt service, like say you're probably taxing, your taxpayers don't pay. It's a risk, right? You set a budget, a tax rate so that you can afford your debt service fund. Your debt service will not pay your obligations. So the general, yeah, exactly. So the general can bail out.
But they want to look for, I mean, so you want to, right, we have a, we have a pretty healthy.
Yeah. And that's also why they want to know what investments you're in, because if you're in. Governments aren't really allowed to invest in risky stuff, but if you are into something that could. You know.
We invest our citizens. We're entirely in Bitcoin.
A significant amount of non-hey, I think, I think we dropped close to ten grand one year, maybe, but like.
Yeah, it's all, it's not a, it's never a hundred, but it's always.
Yeah, it's north, it's north of ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
All right, we have a council. Sorry for the delay.
Okay, everybody was here.
Yeah, that has been internet glitch too.
Yeah.
Someone eating tuna fish?
Oh, the coffee room, that's what it is.
No, this is like.
It's the latest thing.
I was just going to be like, who brought tuna to a late night hot meeting? Good grief. Y'all were all cold. I was finally feeling nice. I'm like a warrior though. I like it at like sixty-eight degrees.
Oh, we're good.
Yeah, this is my favorite kind of night. All these bonds numbers.
Please, go ahead. We're back in session.
I got the fourth.
All right.
Yeah, actually the item is discussion, consideration and take appropriate action on the receipt and acceptance of the audited basic financial statements. Supplemental schedules and independent auditor report by A P I D P C for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth.
And move that we accept the audit and report by A V I P for the fiscal year twenty twenty.
Right, second.
Motion in a second, please.
So over the staple document, it's kind of on a nicer page. First, this is our required communication with you council, but. The people charged with governance over the city. It's basically called our letter of conduct. So it, it explains the scope of our audit and how the audit went. So first, I'll, I'll, I'll just summarize the paragraph real quick. So the first paragraph is our scope and that's the, we audited the financial statements for the government activities. In each major fund, which are the general and the debt survey of the city of Woodcrees for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty twenty-two. We did follow government generally accepted auditing standards as we conducted our audit. Um, we did follow government generally accepted auditing standards as we conducted our audit. And, um, professional plans require that we communicate the following to, to you, the, those charging, but in, in, uh, governance over the city. Um, accounting practices and policies are important part of these financial statements. We just have one new policy over operating leases, uh, that we adopted in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, it was, um, passed by government accounting standard board. Um, and it's just something that you had to implement this year. All cities, all municipalities had to implement this G A B E this year. Um, we've, uh, we've entered that information into the financial statements themselves, and, and so we've, um, adopted that standard. Accounting estimates are also integral part of these financial statements. The most significant estimates are. Um, your net pension liability, um, and your other post-employment liability related to your T M R S. Um, the deferred inflows and outflows related to that, and as well as your allowance for uncollectible taxes and your depreciation expense on your. Um, capital assets. We evaluate those and, and feel they're, they're consistent and comparable in, in the financial statements taken as a whole. Um, if there was any financial statement disclosure required to communicate that with you, we had any difficulties or uncorrected misstatements. Or material corrected misstatements, we were required to communicate that with you. Um, we did have fourteen journal entries this, this year. Um, most of them were very minor, so we didn't feel that we needed to highlight that information, um, to you. Um, if we had any disagreements with management, um, required to communicate that to you. Management is going to provide us with a representation letter to basically state they provided me all, or us, uh, A V I P, all the information we needed to do our audit. Um, and then if management consulted with other independent auditors or accountants, they are required to come forward to us, the auditors. Get, um, uh, full, um, scope of the, of the accounting issue before making their assessment. So our stance, to our knowledge, that did not happen during the fiscal year. We did have one comment, um, I talked it over with Kevin already, and it's starting clear for your fiscal year twenty-three. Um, it's investment officer training. So part of the public funds investment app in Texas. Requires investment officers to go through, um, ten hours of training every two years. Um, we've in Quoten, you had some turnover during the year, and so we couldn't locate, uh, your, your prior investment officer's training certificate. Um, Kevin has provided me his training certificate, um, and it's good through, I think, next year. He's got one more year and then he'll have to go through more training. Um, so that has already been satisfied, but I just wanted to let you know that we, we did have. A violation of, of the public fund investment managers on retention of those certificates. And last year's certificate. Sure.
So, um, so y'all would have done the audit when he was the.
Yes.
Missing then?
No, we had it, but it expired. Like, so it's, it's not within that two years. So the, it had expired at the beginning of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and we looked everywhere. It wasn't in the employee file. It wasn't online. So, but I gave them, I've already taken it. I do it annually, so.
Yeah, so we recommend a process just on the retention of these. Okay, you know, turnover happened, so like just making sure that wherever the city has, that their investment officer, that that just maintains with the city.
Right, it should go into their employee file, which it does, which is now.
The, the employee file?
No, the employee. Employee.
Things like that should be like kept in hard copy in the office.
It should be on the employee file.
Yeah, or a network file or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also certificates and completions, or let's say have a certification or something that do, you're always supposed to go in employee file. If this standard practice.
So that covers this letter. Is there any other questions on this letter before I continue to the thicker document? I know we've been here a while. I'm gonna kind of. Highlight what I, what I consider important, but please, uh, let me know if you want me to, to talk about the audit process or, or any of that information I covered. On, uh, page one, which is just after the table contents, actually a couple of pages in, it's our independent auditor's report. These are what, um, uh, we were engaged to do. It's our, our report on, um, our audit, um, results. And our opinion is first paragraph, um, the accompanying financial statements of the government activities each major fund. For Citywood Creek, um, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, is presented in accordance with generally accepted, uh, accounting, uh, principles. That is the highest opinion you can have from an independent accounting, um, firm. It is, uh, basically states that you have no qualifying statements. So it's a clean opinion, as, as we call it in the industry. Basis over the opinions, again, it talks about the standard that we, we follow. Um, management's responsible for financial statements, uh, as they're presented, our responsibilities are discovered on the next page. Um, it basically expl- explains we're gonna exercise professional judgment, follow our standards. And, um, assess management's, uh, representation of the financial statements and the amounts, uh, within the financial statements themselves. There is some required, uh, supplemental information that is required in relation to the, the financial statements as well. Uh, management is such an analysis. I like to call that the clip notes for the financial statement. It kind of gives a, a clear, um, um, comparison of, of last year to this year. With some, um, explanatory language on what happened during the year compared to last, gives a little more, uh, meat to, to the bone of the financial statements. Also some pension schedules and other post-investment schedules related to T M R S liabilities. Those are required as part of. Required supplemental information. Other supplemental information, the only one we present there is the debt service budget, um. It's required, it's not required, but we consider other supplemental information because you council approved that budget. And so, um, we feel like it's important for the financial statement users to, to have that information at their, at their hands as well. Pages five and, and through. The nine is the, um. Actually, page eleven, I'm sorry, is the manager discussion analysis. Again, a clip note to the financial statements, more narrative. Kind of explains the difference in financial reporting. Wasn't gonna cover that too much. I was just gonna kind of highlight on. Um, the financial statements themselves. So we start on page fifteen, um, couple pages in. Um, our total net position for the year, and this is, um, on a full crew basis, all your funds combined into one column here. Um, and, and represented on a full crew level. This is what your, um, investors typically look at, cause it kind of gives them. Apples to apples with, uh, for profit entities, even though you're a, um, municipal. Um, our net position is three point one million. Um, most of that is embedded in our, in our assets. You can see our assets are three point six kind of towards the middle, uh, top of the middle there. Um, and again, most of that three point six is our, is our, our capital infrastructure as well as, um, our liquid cash. We have one point five million in, in cash. The next page is a kind of a weird statement of activity, but, um, I like to describe it as, as the cost of, of running the government. So we start on the far left is our, our expenses, and we have all general government expenses of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And interest and fees of, of, of nine thousand five ninety-five. Then you go to the right and you have some program revenues that offset some of the costs of the expenses. So you have twenty-nine thousand of charges for services. That's like permits and, um, um, musical port, as well as, um, operating grants and contributions. You have four hundred twenty-seven thousand in operating grants. That was related to the COVID money that you got during the year. Um, that said, far right column is the cost of the government, um, uh, based on, um. Program revenues. So you have two hundred twenty thousand of, of total cost of the government that's gonna be supported with general revenues. Which are covered on the next, um, if you work your way down, you have nine hundred thousand in general revenues, and most of that's in your tax revenue. Property sales or franchise taxes. As we did have a restatement there of seventy-one thousand, and that's related to some franchise taxes that were received, um, cash basis. In the current year, in October and November of, of twenty twenty-one, two, or twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. But they were related to September of twenty twenty-one. So, um, last year's audit did not catch that. Um, so we wanted to make sure we took that revenue out of your current year and showed it as a restatement of fund balance. So we put that revenue back into your opening equity, basically. Um, didn't change the cash flow effect at all. It's just how we report when the revenue gets recognized. On page seventeen is, or what you're more familiar, you're seeing is this is your, uh, balance sheet of your governmental funds. This is how you, your budget is on, on a, um, modified accrual or fund level basis. Um, total assets was one point six in the general fund. Again, one point five of that is, is in your cash and cash equivalents. Um, total liabilities was about seventy-three thousand, um, total fund balance is one point five, almost one point six. Um, but you can see the unassigned there is the most important one, um, that's not restricted for other purposes. That's for ongoing operations of the city, and that was at one point five eight million. Um, that equates to about one point five operating reserves of your current year expenditures. Um, G F A, which is a, um, covering finance, uh, officers association. Um, they kind of have a rule of thumb where you want to be anywhere from the three to six month operating reserves. Um, so you're well above that. So very healthy fund balance, and that's who you're gonna like seeing. Doesn't, um, the, uh, your, um, on, your fund balance, unassigned fund balance in comparison to how much you spend during the year. So it's a very healthy fund balance. I equate fund balance to like a savings accounts real easy. You go on one vacation, you spend all the way out, but it takes years to build it up, right? So it's really good to have a, a healthy fund balance, just preserve for future spending. Page nineteen is our, um. Uh, revenues and expenditures and our changes in fund balance. Uh, total revenues, again, one point one in our, um, um, our general revenues. That includes the four hundred twenty-seven grant revenue I mentioned earlier, as well as about six hundred fifty thousand in, in, in taxes. Um, so, um, that property sales and in franchise. Um, total expenditures through fiscal year was a, a little over a million. Um, you can see your debt service fund right there. You, um, you netted a change of about three hundred eighty-eight bucks, so you brought in just. A little short of, of property tax revenue to support your debt service payment, but you have about twenty-four thousand in, uh. And ending fund balance for future debt service requirements, so. Still healthy, um, budgeting and, and collections on those property taxes to pay your debt service. That said, again, our ending fund balance for the general fund is, is one point, almost one point six million. The rest of the document is, uh, footnote to the financial statements. I wasn't gonna cover those in detail, but it kind of gives a little more, um. Explain, explanation on the financial statement amounts that I covered here today. But I can cover anything, um, or highlight anything that y'all might have a question on.
Then, uh, I just noticed on page nine, it really caught my eye because we went through a lot of accusations of overspending. And not manually turning the budget, and we were operating without a city manager for a lot of last year. And this page just like really dialed it in of like, no, we ran a pretty tight ship and came in right where we're supposed to be. And, I mean, it's really clearly stated, and I know this gets publicly posted, but I think it's worth mentioning in the meeting. Uh, you know, we didn't go over at all, and, uh, we actually came under not much, but still, that's pretty solid.
Oh, yeah, as far as expenditures.
Managing the budget in general, like we landed solidly in a green zone. And we worked for the drama, and this is also just kind of for clarifying public record, because we often get. Some of this kind of mess circulating in the air, but, uh, last year was managed well, is.
And, and, um, this is not last year, but this year it's being managed really well too.
Yeah, well, we actually have a manager now, but. Can you, uh, just tell me about the four, four hundred twenty-seven thousand offering grant contributions?
Yeah. On page nine?
Well, it shows.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'm not entirely sure what, uh, twenty twenty-one was without going back to my audit notes, but I know. Four hundred and twenty.
Four hundred and twenty-seven, that number is the amount that we received in the two tranches from the art fund.
Okay, because you mentioned COVID fun.
Correct. That's the, yeah, that's the two tranches. We got two hundred and fourteen, fifteen in the first tranche. In the remaining in the second tranche, and it all came in the fiscal year last year.
What is the word you were saying?
Tranche, that they considered as a. So, uh. So last year was, um, first tranche was received in September of twenty-one typically. Um, and then the other one was September of twenty twenty. So at the end of last year's audit, I'm sorry, September twenty-one. And September of twenty-two, so those are the two years, sorry. Um, the September of twenty-one was actually deferred last year because y'all didn't spend, uh, with grant revenue, you have to spend the money or you can receive it. Uh, or recognize it. Um, so the federal government gave every city all this money upfront. And so a lot of cities, and right at the end of the fiscal, so a lot of cities had to defer the money until they could spend it. And so y'all happened to just spend both tranches in your fiscal year.
We didn't spend, no, we didn't spend both tranches. What we did is we took it as income, so actually we cleared it out on the government side. And that's how come we don't have to use it for all the infrastructure and everything. We can use it for whatever we want, but it is, it is, I do have it segregated. Because we are planning for the drainage, and so although it is part of the general fund, it's. It's not because. So it's out there in its own fund, so we can.
You have it committed, and yeah, or.
It's accounted for.
It's accounted for separately. Well, what they did is they took the general fund, they took the art fund, and they put them together when they did these financials. But I have all these different buckets that we kept separate.
Which is.
Why are you hesitating when I say committed? Because we're very clear on what we want them used for.
Uh, because it hasn't been, um, voted on yet for that. Uh, four hundred twenty-seven thousand to be spent because we have, we don't have a drainage project.
So, so when I hear the word committed, um, it triggers, uh, a G A B E number fifty-four, which is a fund balance commitment.
Yeah.
So that would take council action to establish, the council action to release. So long, if you have no, um, resolution to establish the, um, commitment.
Yeah.
Then we can't report it in these financials.
I, I understand totally. I just thought we had taken actions to allocate it towards the drainage project specifically in the past, so that's why I'm just.
About in terms of the drainage project, because we were told it could only be used for the drainage project, but the fact is, it doesn't. But, um, but the other fact is, we wanted to go to the drainage, to a drainage project. We just don't have one to, to, you know, spend the money on.
And probably our drainage project that we're looking at is gonna be a lot more than four hundred twenty-seven thousand.
The, the one that, um.
Yeah, was split in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But because of limitations on that money.
There's no limitations.
Oh, there are no limitations. It's not the two thousand twenty-four and then.
No, no, when, when it first came out, the, the government said you can only use it for these things, infrastructure, um, water, wastewater.
Public safety.
Public, and something else. And then they said. Yeah, profit. And then they said, well, we have all of these small cities, and they don't have any of that. And so what they said is that if you have fifteen million, or if you receive less than fifteen minute million in the, uh, art funds. That's the smaller, but you can claim it just as lost revenue. And so we went, I, I've already did it. I did it for us, cause it wasn't done before. Went outside to the government side, and we chose that option, and so we're done with it.
It's free money.
It's free money.
Well, yeah, me, I, I do all ones. And it partis with that.
Yes. But we, we did that at this thing, and that's why I have it separated, because I know one day you're gonna come to me and say, where's that four hundred twenty-seven thousand? And I don't want y'all seeing it in the general fund, thinking that we have more money to spend in the, um. Because when I get in here, eventually, when it works out, you're gonna have, uh, unallocated funds, cause that's how we talk in financial. So that's what you're gonna look for on, on the general fund, is unallocated funds. But that four hundred twenty-seven thousand is not gonna be in the unallocated funds. It's gonna be over here for y'all.
I have a budget request, though, for the, I, I would like for council to get a vote on the books that that money needs to remain for. For drainage and burn projects, and go ahead and get it. Because I want, I, yeah, I just, it's like a protection. We don't know how the next election's gonna go.
Let me see, cause there's a lot of those that y'all have done, that y'all haven't done.
Right.
And so when we present the budget, we'll actually have to show it being moved out of the general fund and transferred to the capital, uh, capital projects.
Because there needs to be, we were understanding that, that there were time limits on utilizing it.
There was twenty, at the end of twenty twenty-four, but because of the option that we took, there are no more.
No more, good.
We do not have to give the money back. You gotta keep it till we use it.
Be nice to use it then.
Oh, we're gonna.
Alright, we have those, yeah, we have. Seconded to accept the audit report, I'd second it.
Councilmember Chris Garmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Buck Hammer.
Hi.
Councilmember David Hein.
Hi.
Mayor Chris Member Foley. Councilmember Lenny Bailey.
Hi.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And you know what, thank you all so much, thank you all so much. Yeah, you don't, you don't get a, you know, a clean save, but remember, you do the work. Um, yes, um, let's go ahead and see if we can get.
May I have a question? The last thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, are they on any kind of fine limit?
We, we kind of need to do. Or, we'd kind of like to do the procurement policy. Because how, how that works affects some of our personnel. Like, like, for instance, you know, to be able to, I mean, like, like what Pat was saying about, you know, having to go out for three bids on a three hundred dollar. Deal, the, the revised procurement policy has a little bit more flexibility on that.
It's just a belief, though, that's what.
It's still, well, we could, do you want to move to it, so we can discuss it, or?
Yeah, we could.
I honestly. I would like to postpone those two items, because this packet was huge. With massive, really important things to refer and refer for, we got it Sunday, portions of it we only got today. I would like time to look at those two documents, I was even going to ask in a meeting to discuss them with you. There's some typos and things too, so I just, it seems like a good workshop thing, we've got a meeting on Tuesday, it's not kicked that far down. Which, the, the fund balance and the procurement policy.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Yeah.
I move that we postpone fifteen and sixteen to the June twentieth workshop. Just, it's getting like my brain.
I, I, I mean, it's, I don't get to vote, you know, I just watch y'all, yeah, so.
That, that's why I was asking, we. Yeah, we have, that's why I was asking, it's like thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, is there, it's on a deadline?
Yeah.
Because I would actually like to amend my own motion. And say, let's move thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen to the June twentieth.
There's a ton, ton.
Now, but it's going to be another huge one.
Is the workshop.
Well, the difference is, the difference is the workshop starts at four, and that is three.
Three.
Three, it's even better.
If we want to keep that one, and don't really see part of you being a huge discussion, but maybe, but a good, like, time with the other two.
Fine, we can wait, I don't have no.
I do want to note that we will have another size restriction on the package, which was the H G starting on Friday, oh, it's Sunday. Because they made about a dozen attempts to remove and re-add, remove and re-add information and see what would fit. So we can only upload so much information into a package.
So the packet, oh, so you're saying that these.
This, it was just a lot.
No, they were, these were included.
These were small, but we still only got everything very close to the meeting, it's been hard for us to get through it all. If you guys are having problems with doing the uploads, and it's very clear, you're, I think. A solid suggestion would be to have, to print out portions for us and say they're available to pick up, or even do a porch drop event.
We can find out till Friday and second, remember, my mom is having surgery on Friday, so I was just, I was back in, I was here. So I did this while I was at the hospital, watching my mom.
Okay, yes, we will, we will do that.
So also, I'd like to. In discussion is that we have the minutes now, so we don't have to put them back into the package.
No, we will.
Now, everything's going to be better.
Okay. If it's a science thing.
I don't think we'll have science things.
Do we want to do the financial statements then? Are we going to move on, are we going to move on, or are these? The, is it, are we good? Got it, financial statements. So what's, your, your motion? You amended the motion, amended your motion to, to all four of them.
Yeah, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Okay, let's vote, alright. I'll be with that. I'm tired. So that means we're going to have the, well, the minute that we do enough.
Yeah, because now we have them. We take home the reading.
Okay. I mean.
We have to. Oh, you're done, I'm sorry. The deadline is tomorrow, at what time?
Deadline is tomorrow at one.
At one. For any submission for the workshop, other than what we're moving forward, if you want it on there, because me and Jeff are having our meeting. We have to put it together with all the supplemental information, and me and Jeff are getting together on. Tomorrow, so we, we, we're doing the agenda tomorrow after one, between one and four, we're going to put together.
Have you reviewed what has been submitted thus far, was it?
No.
I mean, the last time I looked at the, at the form, and this, it was, it was pretty long.
Was it already a lot?
A light.
Light, okay.
Oh, I have a whole bunch of stuff, I haven't even.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Buck Hammer.
Hi.
Councilmember David Hein. Mayor Lieutenant Foley.
Hi.
Councilmember Lenny Bailey.
Hi.
Councilmember Chris Garmer.
Hi.
And. Yeah. If, if we need it, then hopefully, but if we need it, yeah, we can call.